Calling the meeting to order of the Silver City Planning and Zoning Commission, Tuesday, December the 2nd, 2025. If you will be good enough to rise and join the Pledge of Allegiance and the salute the New Mexico flag. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the zealous symbol of perfect friendship among the united cultures. Thank you. I wonder if we could perhaps have a roll call?
Commissioner Stone?
Present.
Commissioner Moody?
Present.
Commissioner Bayless?
Present.
Commissioner Middlestadt?
Chairman Wheaton Smith?
Present. We have a quorum. Commissioner Middlestadt is excused for good cause. Next item is the approval of the agenda. Has everyone had a chance to look at the agenda?
Yes.
Any changes to the agenda? Not hearing any. Those in favor, please say aye.
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 None are opposed. The agenda is approved. Next item is the approval of the minutes of Thursday, November the 6th, 2025. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
Have you any changes to them?
No.
Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the minutes for the meeting of November?
6th.
6th.
I second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not hearing any. Those please in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is, are there any immediate reports from staff? Not hearing any. The next item is a series of public hearings. The first one is a hearing for a variance, 25-02, a request for a variance to the minimum lot area allowed for an administrative subdivision for the property addressed as 413 and 415 West Bremen Street, Silver City, New Mexico. The applicants are Silver Casitas, represented by Smith Realty Estate and Property Management. This is a quasi-judicial hearing, which means we will very strictly be applying Ronald's Rules of Order, which means the questions are directed through the presiding officer, which is the chair in this case. And the first question I have, does any commissioner have any ex parte discussions to disclose or conflicts of interest or financial interests in this case?
No.
No.
No. In which case, we still have a quorum. The next item then is, I will explain the process. First of all, I have to swear in the staff and those who wish to speak in... Oh, allow me to backspace one. My mistake. Did anyone wish to speak in plain public input not associated with the hearings? So everyone who wishes to speak is going to be speaking at one of the hearings. Is that correct?
Apparently, some people might want to speak.
Okay. In which case, let me pause where I was, and we'll go back to community input. Anyone wishing to speak, please go to the podium. And this is normal public input. Make sure there's a red light on a push button, and there is a time limit of five minutes per person.
Do I push the button?
Yeah. Please state your name.
Wendy Raven Phillips. I, uh... This one? No? My name is Wendy Raven Phillips, and I want to speak later at some of the individual ones, but for public speaking, I just want to express my personal opinion about some things. It's just a personal opinion. And it... I just, you know, this process with the businesses in town has been... has reminded me how difficult it is to understand what the heck's going on around here, you know? And I've been here 15 years, and I still get so confused. And I know a lot of the people here don't understand the process. I've asked a lot of questions about what it is, so I kind of understand what's going on tonight. But I've talked to most of you, some of you, and a lot of other people about the whole Arts and Culture District and cannabis issues and how things work. And it's hard for us as a community to really understand until the very last minute and something's being decided. And then we still don't understand what's going on. And I have a real problem with that in this town. I also have a problem with us using a consulting attorney because our town doesn't have its own attorney. And that we've got some land use stuff going on here in this meeting and in town, and we're using an attorney from Luna County, who I don't know anything about you, sir, except that I've read on the internet what your background is, which is in real estate development and government. So I don't think that... I don't feel represented by him on these issues tonight. I wish we could find somebody who would be more supportive of the other side of land use issues. And for now, that's about what I have to say. Until later. Thank you.
Thank you. And who else would like to speak, if you come forward? Thank you. Please say your name and...
Carol Chuko. And I must say a question, a point of clarification. If we are not speaking specifically on one application and we're not being sworn in, do we speak now or later?
This is general public input.
So if we're not being sworn in, there will be an opportunity to speak later?
Yes. When we call the case in particular, it'll be a VA case or a CU case, then that's when we will swear people in. That's correct.
Okay. So if we don't want to be sworn in and we just want to talk about it in general, we speak now?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I thought. Because I think a lot of people are not be... have not decided... They've decided not to be sworn in, but they have a perception that they're going to have a chance to speak later, and I don't want them to miss that chance.
Thank you. And if you could give your name?
Carol Chuko.
Thank you.
Okay. So I've been in this town for 11 years. I grew up in a tinier town. I have dedicated myself to fostering the strength of the community of the town, particularly downtown and particularly in the historic district. And I'm against any and all marijuana/hemp/cannabis permits because Silver City does not need a total of 15 pot shops for a population of less than 10,000 people. That's well more than one per thousand people. And I could care less about pot itself. My concern is about the quality of life. Everyone I have spoken to has said they do not walk downtown anymore because they do not feel safe. And they do not feel safe because of the existence of types of establishments that are not family-friendly. And so no matter how any establishment says, oh, they're going to be better or higher end or whatever it is, people are still going to say, oh my God, more pot shops. I am never going downtown. So I truly hope that any and all applications are turned away. And if for any reason that one is, I would ask that under the conditional permit or whatever the legal language is, that there be a requirement that any and all applicants promptly call police as it is happening, not later conveniently, when anyone in or outside their premises smokes any substance that is illegal to smoke in public or in a public establishment as the occurrence is happening. And so I am very concerned that our entire downtown is going to dry up to the exclusion of adult-only establishments. And so I just... I plead with you to please deny all these applications and if you must, to put really heavy conditions on them. And another thing is that any applicant, part of their conditional license is that they not be permitted to have any street furniture, street signs, anybody handing out flyers, or any other impediment or intimidation of smooth and easy foot traffic. Because that is the lifeblood of our town. And when Bullard dries up, our town dries up. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Would someone else like to speak in general public input?
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question at this point?
Right.
Yes?
Okay.
Yes. So I wanted to ask our community development director, the speaker mentioned the number of pot shops, using her terminology. Was her number accurate in terms of...
We can't... It's pure public input. During public input...
My apologies.
During public input, we can't question or answer of anyone who has just spoken. Thank you very much. If you proceed and if you could give your name. Thank you.
I'm Joe Thomas. I want to speak to process. Currently, if people are applying for a permit, they have to notify the building owners in the area. We... I'm the president of the Grant County Art Guild. We have two physical locations downtown. We rent both locations, and we've been one place for seven years. We didn't get a letter because we're not the building owners. And I think it would be helpful for the neighbors of any potential business going in if all the neighbors were notified, not just the building owners. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Laura Shane, and I have a shop downtown. I'm not sure if I should be speaking now. Like everybody, I think I'm confused, but I will be sworn in if I need to. So thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. To me, the word "community" does not include the word "exclude." And by reports, according to the New Mexico Department of Health, reported cases, 15.4% reported using cannabis within the last 30 days, 22.8% in the last year. This excludes 77 to 84% of the population of New Mexico. I have been writing down the location of where my customers are living for the past two weeks. The average ratio is four to one, unfortunately in the favor of tourism. People visit Silver City for the outdoor activities, culture, history, and charm. Adding an adult retail shop, pot shop, cannabis, whatever, conflicts to the charm of downtown and the overall of the town. Downtown facilitates youth programs, a church, and I see whole classrooms go to the movie theaters with their teachers. Even the visuals such as signage, storefront-style loitering patterns, and an adult usage sign can affect how young people see their environment. The youth is impressionable and it can mold their early thought process. We have oversaturation, 13 at my last count for less than 10,000 population. Having that many visible adult retail cannabis locations does not give the optics of a clean and healthy environment, also making it more difficult for parents to feel comfortable leaving their children here to have the college experience at WNMU, thus affecting the economics of the town and many arenas. Speaking of the topic of economics, when there was an adult cannabis retail shop downtown, four surrounding shops closed and three remain empty to this day. The previous adult retail shop and the empty ones are all affected downtown. I was considering looking into one of them after the cannabis shop left for a much-needed establishment, but now if another is in its place, I won't. I have had in the back of my mind that if it got bad, I would go online only and use my shop as a warehouse, which would devastate me because I love Silver City, downtown, my shop, and my customers. My customers are why I love going to work every day. I had one shop that said they would close if another replaced the one that left. I have been in retail management for decades, and I know the difference between the usual up and down of retail and the cause and effect I hear from my patrons. Because of the loitering in front of the adult retail cannabis shop, I had customers ask me about their safety, tell me their optical and physical experiences. And some, they came because they heard it was quaint but will not be back, and then that word gets around. That brings me to the topic of safety. The individuals I would see in front of their shop also would walk Bullard all day long. I felt unsure and unsafe every day. I now have multiple lines of self-defense and did not feel comfortable hiring an employee and leaving them alone in my shop. And I also... I know an employee at the next-door shop quit because of it. I called the police almost weekly. Since that shop has left, the whole atmosphere has changed, and I haven't called the police once. Even though it might be classy and elevated shop, anyone wouldn't turn away business from those same individuals. Business is business, and money is money. Any adult retail cannabis attracts foot traffic. Bullard Street has heavy tourism traffic. Them being on Bullard Street or downtown increases the likelihood that individuals will light up after they leave the shop and come in contact with tourists. If someone walks into my shop after smoking, the smell remains in my store after they had left for a while, and it's a strong smell. I have to open my door if possible to air out any and/or spray air freshener. I ask my customers if they can smell it because I'm embarrassed that they might think it was me smoking in the back. I want a clean-smelling inviting shop for my customers. My father-in-law smokes like a chimney and has a commercial-grade HVAC in his closed-off wing. And it smells fresh, but the rest of the house smells awful. It travels. If it is a nice day and there's no smell in the outside air, I want to be able to open my door. Customers are more likely to walk through an open welcoming door versus a closed shut-off door. It reduces an impulse buy. Best just not to have the opportunity to purchase on Bullard. Regardless of the type of smoke, the one that doesn't partake in it smells it more intensely than the one that does. When it comes down to it, I don't care if you smoke until the cows come home, just not on Bullard or the downtown area. It negatively affects all the other shops' economy, not just positive to the individual shop. I have had in the back of my mind, if it got worse, I would go online only and use my shop as a warehouse, which would devastate me because I love Silver City, downtown, my shop, my customers. I'm afraid if you allow anything of great size, the oils and the vapor could get into my product, and I would be forced to leave, period. But think about the existing shops within close proximity to the smaller cannabis shops. I'm so passionate about being against the adult retail cannabis smoke shops on Bullard Street in the downtown area that I know I've forgotten something because I get really worked up, but hopefully others here against it will have... bring up those points. I also wanted to mention that Vanessa Serrano, the owner of Silverado Hats, couldn't be here tonight, but she wanted to make sure a note that it was her disapproval as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I also... I also brought little points to hand out.
And if anyone else would like to come forward? Thank you. The lady... Okay.
My name is Ann Lowe. I live on West Street. We need to keep our wholesome, community-minded downtown family-friendly. Tourists interested in pot smoking can attract other less savory drug users. Our merchants, community, and police should not have to worry about the uptick in crime that could result. We need to maintain a thriving, safe environment downtown. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm Eric Ackerhausen, and I'm here to say I don't think we need cannabis businesses in the historic downtown district of Silver City. I think the city has better locations for these types of businesses. The shop that was on Bullard was a big problem for the downtown area, and now you want to add another location on Texas Street that will be cooking product between the two major downtown hotels. My question is, what will that smell like in the downtown area? I don't think we need these businesses in our downtown tourist location. I think we have better locations for these businesses to be at, so you'd say no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, gosh, I have so many things to say. My name is Blake Farley. Thank you for hearing me tonight, commissioners. I do have a little speech I want to read, but first, I want to just put a couple of things in perspective. I want to say that what we're talking about, we're not... Well, for me, I'll speak for myself, this is not a discussion about being against cannabis. For me, this is a discussion about a very small area in Silver City known as the Commercial Historic District and about keeping any additional cannabis out of that area. There already are a couple of businesses in that area that are grandfathered in, so this is just about out of all of the town of Silver City, the city limits, this is about a little, small strip, just a few blocks, that have been designated by the Town Council and planning zoning as the Commercial Historic District. I also want to just mention that on October 28th... So backing up just a little bit, to be able to have a cannabis business in historic downtown, you must apply for a conditional use permit, and that's why the applicants are here tonight. It is not allowed arbitrarily. So an applicant... Like a person that wants to open a cannabis business cannot just come in and open a shop in downtown Silver City in the historic district. They can on the highways, they can on Hudson, they can on 180, they can in a lot of other areas without having to get approval. But if they want to do it downtown in the historic district, they must apply, that you go through the application process, like the applicants have done, and submit them for this hearing. But I also want to bring up that on October 28th, the Town Council created an amendment to remove that. So that is no longer the case. After this hearing tonight, my understanding is that there can be no more applicants for this conditional use permit. So the two applicants that are here tonight submitted their applications, one on October 24th and one on October 28th, or 27th. So they just barely slid in to that. So I just want to point out a couple of things because these things are really hard for people to understand, for laypeople to really grasp and get, that we are not... I'm not against cannabis. I'm just against the few blocks in the protected historic district that the town councilors have already said that they also want to protect. Okay. So I just want to let you know a little bit about who I am. I own a historic building. I bought it in 2020, and my husband and I have renovated it, not as investors, but we bought downtown because we wanted to preserve the character of our downtown. We put a lot of money and energy into renovating our building. I have a real estate office there now, and we host many visitors, and for many people, this is the first impression of Silver City. We take this responsibility seriously because we care very deeply about the community, and we cherish our artsy, quirky downtown. It's beautiful buildings, it's coffee shops, it's galleries, it's restaurants and local businesses, and it's unique spirit. The cannabis... The proposed cannabis businesses, one of them would just be one door away from my office. The other would be a few doors down across the street. So this is not abstract for me. It affects my daily environment, my neighbors, the families and tourists who walk past, and the spirit and energy of our Arts and Cultural District. I am not against cannabis. In fact, I own another commercial building on the highway. It's not in the historic district, and that building is currently rented to a cannabis retailer, and they're great. I support their business and appreciate what they contribute to the community. I'm not against cannabis any more than I'm against alcohol. I enjoy wine and whiskey, but I wouldn't want a liquor store one store away from me on Bullard Street. And I also like gasoline, just like everybody else, I rely on it. But I don't want a gas station in historic... in the heart of the Historic Arts and Culture Corridor either. Though this is not a question of product for me, it's a question of location, compatibility, and the long-term vision for our historic downtown. Many people have already mentioned the business... Am I too long?
If you could conclude.
Okay. All right. So I'll just say that we are not like other communities. Most of our buildings are locally owned, and we want to protect what we have. And the historic district is the heart of our town, and it's one of the things that makes our town special. And I would just ask you to remove cannabis as an allowed use. So thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak in general public input? When you're getting close to five minutes, I will move my hand up.
Hi, I'm Teresa the Jewelry Lady, and I have a store at Yankee and Bullard. And since the pot shop closed, I thought the police were chasing all the bums off the street, and they weren't. They just kind of vanished mostly. So it's really nice not to have to deal with people sitting on my curb and on my, you know, just trying to scoot them away, you know, three days a week or so, trying to get them out of my neighborhood. So it's just nice that they closed. That's it.
Thank you.
My name is Cecilia McNichol. I'm a resident of District 2, and I've lived in Grant County for more than 23 years. I'm the owner of a commercial building in the historic district located at... I have to catch my breath. 211 North Texas. So it's right behind Bullard. Excuse me, I have a breathing problem, so I have to catch my breath. Give me one second. Okay. There are four spaces currently leased in my building. They include Wild West Weaving Studio, Grant County Art Guild, which was represented here tonight by Joe Thomas, Bread Basket Bakery, and Silver City Tie-Dye, a retail clothing store. Some of those tenants have had their businesses active in this location for more than 10 years. Lois Duffy, a well-known local artist and previous owner for more than 20 years, also leased the building to artists. I myself, as an artist, and I purchased the building from Lois several years ago with the intention to continue and emphasize the nature and utility of our Historic Arts and Cultural District. I'm speaking tonight here for two reasons. One, I value the unique characteristics of our downtown Arts and Cultural District, and I respect and support our town's planning and zoning vision. There has been a lot of thought and volunteer energy and love for our town that has been put into our planning documents. So I'm aware that there are two cannabis conditionally-used applications being considered tonight by planning and zoning. And there are four criteria... tonight by planning and zoning, and there are four criteria that I find that the applications do not meet. One of them is public health and safety, and I consider that issue for environmental air and water quality and odor annoyance. I've experienced the odor annoyance in other mountain towns. For example, as a result of unpleasant odors even when ventilation requirements are met, many Colorado towns no longer permit the use in their cultural districts. The second one is to injure the value, not injure, the value of adjoining or nearby properties. The perception of many is that if the uses were approved, it might likely, would result in a decrease of property values. We could use Three Wise Women as an example. As a Realtor, in my professional opinion, I would predict that the cultivation of cannabis in a building would limit its future use and value, humidity, mold, odor, et cetera. It's no different than if it was like a trout farm. These buildings are not suitable for those uses. Third, would it be in harmony with the area in which it is located? I don't believe it would be in harmony within a walkable tourist art district. Although our planning documents classify cannabis as an industrial-type use, most places consider cannabis to be agricultural. This is important because there are many environmental concerns associated with agricultural production, which cannabis cultivation clearly is. I mean, they are growing plants, right? So, it's clearly not compatible downtown. Rural areas are more compatible. And fourth, would it be in conformity with the town's comprehensive plan? And no, I don't believe so. But I'm aware that all of those above can be debated, but personally, I don't feel that the applications meet those standards. We could look at this from another angle. We could answer this question. What does the ideal cannabis cultivation facility look like to anybody here in this room? Well, it might be a warehouse, or it could be a greenhouse. It has different components like growth medium, water, lights, nutrients, commercial fertilizers, manure, temperature, ventilation. So, if we ask the simple question, does a required, does a requested use of the old Buffalo Barb Building or other historic buildings on Bullard Street seem to be a good fit? I mean, they're not a greenhouse, they're not warehouses, they weren't built with these kind of uses in mind. So, I would say it would be a more logical approach for the folks that want to have these businesses to find a more suitable location that has less conflicts. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm here representing my husband Brent and our six-year-old. Thank you for hearing our input tonight. We own four multifamily properties in a near downtown, plus one beloved commercial property in the Commercial Historic District. We are inspired by Silver City business people, like my own great-grandma, who owned a beauty shop in the Commercial Historic District, and my dad, who was active in the chamber, prospectors, rotary, crime stoppers, to name a few. We are committed to doing our part to ensure a strong and healthy community, and we're counting on you all and your roles on this commission to do the same and say no to applications for new cannabis businesses in the Commercial Historic District. My recommendation for conditional use permits is not in conformity with the town's adopted plans and would be out of harmony with the area. The 2025 Land Use and Zoning Code, adopted by the council in October, allows cannabis manufacturing, retail, and distribution in plenty of areas zoned differently. Like so many, we're not against cannabis in general. We're just here to express our agreement with the Town Council's decision to remove cannabis as an allowed use in the Commercial Historic District. It remains an allowed use in areas owned industrial, commercial, rural. Our property on Yankee Street is one the Town of Silver City already committed to preserving the look and feel of. Thirty years ago, the Corporation for Downtown Development contributed to a project that safeguarded what Elizabeth Warren built in 1911, and so now we, along with Silver City Main Street, have the shared responsibility of maintaining that piece of history. So many generations have worked to build and conserve what's special about our town, and our family would like to see Silver City stay true to its commitment, well, would like to stay true to its commitment to, in one councillor's words at the October meeting, keep the character of downtown. In the discussion around the amendment to remove cannabis as an allowed use in the Commercial Historic District, another councillor said, quote, "The free-for-all has caused some challenges for enforcement. Possible continued challenges around enforcement are concerned. A lack of enforcement or weak enforcement renders the legislation meaningless." So, let's ensure all the town's new laws dictate how Silver City actually operates. We need to put our time and energy toward the town's future goals and adhere to the standards that local leaders have already set. So, please uphold the plans to let cannabis businesses operate only in places where Table 3.2 and the 2025 Land Use and Zoning Code prescribes its allowance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Michael Metkev. This is actually very difficult, as I have a working relationship with one of the applicants, and I'm a patron of his existing business. I wish the city had not put me in this position, but I must express my concerns about the issues that will affect our business as well as the entire historic downtown. My wife, Christine, and I have invested in the Historic Murray Hotel. We are committed to economic development, sharing the town's unique history, supporting tourism, as well as positive family experience in the downtown Historic District. The Town Councilors have determined that no future cannabis-related permits should be granted to the downtown district to better support our communities, families, children, and tourists. This is what the community wants, and although these pending applications were submitted three days prior to the amended ordinance, the fact that the cannabis-related businesses are not wanted in the downtown area has not changed. This is not a cannabis issue, but a location issue. Will this, will these cannabis situations be in harmony with the area in which it's located? The town has a nuisance ordinance that includes both noise and odor. Odor will likely permeate through the old structures. Large filtration systems will need, will be needed for any manufacturing or other types to protect employees, manage the strong odors from growing processes, processing, consuming cannabis, and it will potentially create considerable noise. Our building has over 100 operable double-pane windows. Our window air conditioners draw in exterior air. Odor and noise easily travel through open windows. Since we do not have a central air conditioning system, the cost for us to mitigate odor and sound would be in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. Our business provides 50 hotel guestrooms and 15 apartments. Another hotel and several other apartments are nearby. Is it wise or even desirable to have a manufacturing facility so close to where people sleep and dwell? Will this be in conformity with the town's comprehensive plan? You are considering permitting occupancy to the premier intersection in the Historic Downtown District, which is the most densely developed area in town, with over 80% parking utilization, according to the Downtown Action Plan. If the conditional use permit were awarded and conflicts arise, the town has little recourse except to enforce the nuisance ordinance regarding odor and noise. Recently, the town has proven that they were ineffective with this type of enforcement with a bad actor on 306 Bullard. Similarly, the town did not act around 25 years ago, when the Helmet Factory, where the hub is now located, several years, over several years, the town would not act on the odor issues, and that created by the Helmet Factory. Then litigation ensued, resulting in several residents near the factory receiving liens on their homes. In that instance, the town did not use foresight regarding future consequences. It is imperative the town now be very cognizant of the consequences of locating cannabis facilities in the shops downtown. Since the town has had issues enforcing odor and noise and fractures in the past, if conditional use permits are granted today, it would only be for, it should only be for a limited duration. The town should then consider creating an amortization clause for non-conforming use in the Historic Downtown District and rezone the Historic District north of College Avenue to a commercial district to accommodate the existing cannabis facility. The downtown Historic needs to comply, needs to completely support families, children, and tourists. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Philip Cave. I'm the general manager for the Historic Murray Hotel located on Broadway Street. Almost daily, I drive Broadway and Bullard to and from work, to and from the bank, to and from Walmart. When you are driving, when you are walking, those streets, you see a lot. And as general manager, let me tell you that I have personally seen a transient who is frequently seen on Broadway, standing there in front of our hotel, begging guests who are walking out for money, and when he has enough money, he goes down to the CBD shop. You know, it is, it is not a pleasant thing for me as a general manager to see, and yes, we have asked this transient to move along and move along and move along, and he does frequent his way back around. You know, and I should also start off by saying that I bear no ill will to anybody in regards to this concern about establishing marijuana businesses downtown. Our hotel, my staff, myself, Michael and Christine, we have worked hard on establishing relationships across this town, the university, Gila Regional Hospital, Hidalgo Medical Services, and Little Toad Creek Cues. We have wonderful relationships in an established nature for the benefit of the town, and that benefit is for, in the long run, tourism in this town. The downtown area, for years and years, has been focused on tourism, the Arts and Cultural District, which is where the heart of Silver City has been for years. And it is out of concern and safety that I am here to let you guys know that I believe and I feel that Silver City, the downtown, should be preserved for the Arts and Cultural District. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen and ladies. My name is Mark Richard. I'm a local architect. I own a building near the heart of downtown, and I'd like to talk about one particular issue, and the concept of growing marijuana in a basement, to me, is an expensive proposition. Think about how you're dealing with humidity already in a basement. Then if you introduce plants, you're going to be introducing irrigation systems, you're going to introduce a lighting system, an artificial lighting system, and you're going to have to deal with excess humidity. That's going to require massive amounts of ventilation. And where is that air going to go? You're going to be sucking it in and blowing it out, and the air that's going to be exhausted that will, that will be humid, will be heavy air. So, if it's exhausted near the heart of downtown, the heart of downtown is going to smell like a skunk just got killed. Now, you could address that issue with filtration, but the cost of filtration, vast quantities of air, is going to be tremendously expensive. So, I really don't think having a farm underground makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening to everyone here. I would like to thank you for having this meeting. My name is Yvonne Romero. I am the owner of 210, 208, 206, and 204 North Bullard. We remodeled these historical buildings, the Pink Store North, from the ground up, code, everything, met with the Historical Society on everything. We're in Silver City because of the arts community. We, it was the community that drew us here. We wanted to be a part of this. We have relationships with the university, with, with many businesses. Anyone who comes into our store, we support, for clubs, for churches, for schools. And the feeling downtown changed considerably once this last shop closed. We had never had to call the police in the past until this shop had opened, and we did notice that whether, I'm, we're not sure whether it was a visitor or a resident of Silver City was disturbed on the sidewalk near the Pink Store. I won't get into that, but it's, when, there's a webcam that faces the Pink Store, and I have people that I've met there that say that's where they first saw Silver City, and then they wanted to move here. They wanted to come see the colors, and they, and they wanted to experience, and it's this feeling, this charm. It's, it's a charm. The Silco, the Murray, we stayed there last week while we set up the store for Christmas, the downtown parade, it's the, the family, the, the groups of women that come when there's conventions, and they can walk the downtown, and I'm, I'm here this evening. I have to leave and drive back to Palomas. I'm a big supporter of Silver City. I tell people this is where they have to move. It's fabulous, but please, let's keep it that way. I, I'm sorry for the businesses that are trying to open in the downtown area. I support all entrepreneurship, and I hope that, that their business will do well somewhere else, but really to make this not, to turn Bullard into something other than gift stores and galleries and restaurants, and to give it another feeling, that's not what we're here for. I, I really hope you take that into consideration as you vote tonight for the feeling that you want, because it's what we remember of how that place made us feel. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
Hello, everyone. My name is Gino Fergoli. I'm the head volleyball coach at W N M U, and normally, we stay out of these kind of issues, but I feel like this is important, just to kind of add an element of what I'm thinking and what I personally go through. My job is to recruit athletes from all around the world. We have a girl from China, a girl from Netherlands, Brazil, and families from all over the area in the United States, and I have to sell them on this town. So, what we do is we drive them all around, and we try to eat in the restaurants that we feel give a great light to the city. We try to talk about all the positives of our town, and we try to get them to sign up and play here. As a lot of you know, we're at a disadvantage because our conference is mainly in Texas, and there's a lot of bigger places. and there's a lot of bigger places, towns with a lot more ordinances, rules, things that are more attractive to a lot of people. So sometimes it's tough. But I can tell you that when I bring people here and we drive them around and we sit them down at a place like Adobe Springs, or maybe a W Z, or maybe, you know, what was Cues, we get them to feel safe and we feel, and we get them to feel great about leaving their daughters here. And so that's been a big issue lately with the last establishment that closed, the homeless problems downtown. I'm getting to a point where I call somebody downtown that I know that owns a shop or something, several people in here, and I ask, hey, what does it look like down there? Can I, can I, can I bring this, this family by? And like the lady from China that I talked about, their whole family came down here and their main concern was, is the city safe? Is the downtown area an area that my kid can walk from campus and go shopping or get something to eat, or buy something from a thrift store, or whatever? So I just want everybody to think, again, I echo the previous speakers that this is not about, you know, cannabis in general. It's about the location of it. And downtown needs to stay an area where I can promote to all my student athletes and their families that this is a great tourist spot, your daughter's going to be safe. You know, they're going to be able to go down there and thrive. And when they're not playing volleyball or doing school, it's a place that you guys can go. And when I first got here, I heard that there was a fracture between the college and the community. And we're trying to rectify that. You know, so I'm trying to take people down there. There's, there's coaches that I know of that don't do that. You know, they take them maybe to this bowling alley off campus, maybe, or something, and that's it. They don't want them to see a homeless problem or a crime problem. And if you go on the internet and you look up crime in our city, you'll see a big red blob over the downtown area. And so it's starting to get better. I know that. I know there's so many great people here. They're trying to make it better. I'm, I'm taking a risk even speaking because I'm getting ready to sign a contract extension here because we've done better. But I feel like it's that important for just to add this element for you guys to consider what these decisions mean to the college and not just the athletes that go downtown and try to patron, you know, we're trying to push down there, but to all the students and all the events that we do on campus and how much tourism that brings in and the economic, you know, the economic development that goes through that. So I just wanted to add that element for you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Katrina Gardea. And I guess I kind of wanted to start with saying that I don't believe that the, well, let's just say that downtown historic district is already dry. You go down, walking down, there's multiple businesses that are already closed, whether it's jewelry or a restaurant or even cannabis. It's, it's, people are storing, using these businesses as storage for whatever it may be. They're not even being used. It's, it's closed down. It is dry. A lot of people are trying to say that they want a place for their kids to walk down the street. But what parent feels comfortable taking their, their child into an art gallery where they, they're scared they're going to touch something or hurt something or break something? I know that there is an ice cream shop there for, you know, children, which I've been to and I love it. Downtown used to be an area for, you know, the younger generation to go down and cruise and, and walk the streets with their family, whatever it may be, whatever company there may be. I do not think that cannabis is the issue downtown whatsoever because I know that if the previous hemp company would have handled their procedures and protocols correctly, that there would not be a meeting right now against cannabis. Everybody would be okay with it. So I'm kind of just, I know there's a lot of people against cannabis and I understand that it's in a historic district. But I'm hoping that for the future of Silver City, it can help younger people come in and feel comfortable with opening a business and occupying these empty buildings that just aren't anything anymore. And I guess I'm going to leave it with that. And I know a lot of people are against me, but that's fine. And thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you.
So my name is Abel Rios. I'm the owner of Abel Jacobal Trades. I've owned my business for 10 years and a lifetime resident from here. Most of the people that came up here and talked were all real estate owners and I understand that they try and take care of downtown area. But I honestly think that it'll be a good thing because cannabis would be a good thing because it brings revenue. And I think that they should be permitted with rules, like for security and, I don't know, just give like ordinance or something on top of them, you know what I mean? To keep it controlled, of course, you know? But I think that they should be given a chance.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners, for the opportunity to speak. My name is Donna Flannigan. I've lived in Silver City for 25 years. When I retired from Hidalgo Medical Services and my husband retired from the state of New Mexico, we opened an art gallery at the corner of Bullard and Yankee. Things were wonderful. I loved working downtown. I love the energy and the beauty and the people, the historical buildings, and how unique our town is. My gallery was one door away from the famous Buffalo Bar, which my husband painted numerous times. In fact, we sold so many pictures of it that he did prints. And we even had former owners and people that had worked in the Buffalo Bar who came in the gallery and told stories about it. And they were so happy to see that the heritage was being carried on and the history was being carried on. So many of our wonderful businesses, restaurants, offices, lawyers' offices, ice cream stores, beautiful buildings, fit together to create a picture of what we want Silver City to be for our residents and for tourists. We want, I want to see buildings down there used for the highest and best use. That's a principle that I think is really important. And I know there's concern about buildings being empty. But I think there are things that could be worse than buildings being empty. And I think that having a factory or a downtown producing things, we don't have anything industrial like that in the downtown area. And I don't think it would fit and be a good match. But I experienced, I was, had my business when the marijuana store that came in down the street, just a few doors down from me, opened and everything changed. It became too risky for people to operate that were close to that business and several of them closed their stores. We don't want to see that happen again. We don't want downtown to empty out. And we, there were even times when there was a robbery at Knives Point after they opened. And I think it was connected to that business. And at one point, I even wondered if I needed a weapon in the gallery because I was a woman working down there, often at night, late at night, by myself. And I never had dreamed or imagined I would feel unsafe in downtown Silver City. That should never happen to anyone. It concerns me that the two permits came in at a time, the two requests for permits came in at a time when the town had made a decision not to have these kind of facilities downtown. And I think it's sort of opportunistic and not something that we want. We don't want manufacturing down there. We don't want heavy traffic that interferes with what's happening already with tourism and with residents enjoying living and coming downtown. There are numerous retail stores for cannabis in other parts of the town. There are lots of places to put them. One issue downtown is parking. And there are lots of places where people have plenty of parking, but not downtown. One of the concerns I had as a business owner down there was how difficult it was for people to park. And it would be even more difficult if people are coming in very short term, taking parking places just to buy cannabis. I don't want to see that happen. Tourism is important. We have over half a million tourists in Silver City in, in the area that come to the Gila Wilderness. We don't count how many come downtown because we can't. But I know they came in my gallery over and over. They came in, they shopped, they bought things, they ate a meal. Almost everybody would ask a recommendation for a restaurant. They love Silver City, but I saw that change when the marijuana stores moved in. People would comment about the smoke. They would ask us about crime and whether there were concerns and you would try to reassure them. But if I was concerned about my own safety, even during the daytime, sometimes, I didn't feel positive about reinforcing that for people. I'm not against marijuana. I was glad when it came in. And I'm, I actually, nobody else has said this, but I use it because it helps me sleep at night. And I'm not ashamed of that. It's, I think it's great for medicinal purposes and I support the businesses that have it. As many people have said tonight, it's not about cannabis, it's about location. And let's protect what we have downtown. I believe if we had these two new businesses down there, there will be the kind of problems we had before. And if, and if new companies open, people who live downtown, people who stay in the hotels will be affected. I think they're likely could, we have seen businesses that had to close, that invested, some of them maybe as much as hundreds of thousands of dollars in their business and had to close because of cannabis store downtown. We don't want to see that happen to the Murray Hotel. We don't want to see that happen to anybody who's downtown, who's established. So as a resident who loves Silver City, I ask that you strongly consider all the opposition you've heard here tonight. Thank you very much and thank you for everyone who's expressed themselves tonight.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Todd Shelby. My wife and I bought and renovated our Bullard Street Building in 2018. Have been open since January of 2019. I'm in no way opposed to the legalization of cannabis. I also fully support the Town Council's decision to remove cannabis as an allowed use in the Commercial Historic District. Concerns with indoor grow operations are numerous. Successful plants require high humidity of 50 to 70 percent. This can lead to significant fungal growth and mold. Mold is not only dangerous to people, especially children. It can also lead to structural damage to buildings, fire hazards for mold affecting electrical systems, and pest infestations. State inspectors do not inspect for mold and fungus issues. Cannabis indoor grow operations can produce strong odors that may escape through ventilation systems. This is primarily from terpenes during the flowering stage, which can be constant with a perpetual harvesting system. The state of New Mexico does not inspect for or monitor exterior odors. To achieve a desirable high THC content in plants, indoor grow operations require carbon dioxide levels of 700 to 1500 parts per million. Normal outside air carbon dioxide levels are 300 to 400 parts per million. Carbon dioxide is odorless, colorless, and tasteless. Carbon dioxide poisoning symptoms range from vomiting and dizziness to convulsion and lack of consciousness. The state of New Mexico does not monitor or inspect for carbon dioxide levels. Chemical fertilizers and pesticides, which many people are sensitive to, are also frequently used. Does the town of Silver City have a plan for measurable and enforceable inspections to deal with these issues? Even though smoking cannabis outdoors is illegal, our town, and especially our downtown, has had consistent problems with this issue. Our hardworking police are perpetually understaffed and overextended. What is the town's plan for an inevitable increase in this problem? I love Silver City and am so grateful for the support of locals at our business. Many long-term clients have told us that they come downtown less frequently and feel less safe. How will two new cannabis locations on Bullard contribute to this? According to the town of Silver City, cannabis retail permits also include the possibility of cannabis consumption languages. Cannabis manufacturing includes grow operations and cannabis production includes creation of any cannabis-related product. What protocols are in place to consistently monitor these activities? The state Cannabis Control Division inspects facilities about once a year. Is this adequate to combat potential issues and violations? I'm concerned about keeping our downtown safe and family-friendly, protecting public health, including employees of cannabis operations, and protecting property values. Thank you.
I'm Joe Thomas, president of the Grant County Art Guild, a nonprofit that's been operating in the area since 1968. We have two storefronts in the historic district, both of which would be affected by the conditional permits being discussed tonight. The first, our first location is the Grant County Art Guild at 316 North Bullard, a half block from the proposed cannabis store. The second is the Grant County Art Guild Studio in Texas, across the street from the proposed cannabis store and farming facility. Our gallery is a major downtown anchor, as we have been at the location for seven years and we are open seven days a week. We are the first business across Footbridge from the visitor center, so we get lots of tourists' feedback about our town. The town has guidelines for building use. The use of the property should not endanger the public health or safety or decrease the value of businesses around it and must be in harmony with the surrounding area. The request to operate a cannabis store on Bullard in the storefront that recently housed the hemp, the hemp store is a request for a store, not a lounge. But the hemp store was also a store, not a lounge. Consumption on-site was not legal, but it happened anyway, often enough that the hemp smell permeated that part of the downtown. It reeked. The most common complaint we got from tourists was, does it always smell like this? People congregated at the hemp store for illegal consumption and they were defensive about doing something illegal in an open way. Our block was perceived as less safe and visitors commented that they didn't want to walk down the block. The business next to the hemp shop closed because of this and the owner put the house, put the building on the market. Our city and our local police were unable to prevent illegal and disruptive behavior at the hemp store. I have great respect for our local police, but they are understaffed and they don't have the resources to have an officer stationed downtown monitoring businesses. The hemp store and the cannabis store will have different owners, but these are similar types of businesses. And if the city and police were unable to enforce the law for the first store, why would we assume that they would be able to do so at a similar business? Moving on to the permit request for a new Texas street, Texas street storefront for the sale of cannabis. I have even greater concern about the proposed, proposed new storefront on Texas. Texas is a narrow back street. If the police could not stop illegal consumption and the traffic that surrounded it on Bullard, where things are very visible, how will they control things on a narrow side street? I'm also concerned about the permit request to farm and process cannabis in the basement of the Buffalo Bar with odor being the primary concern. Growing, harvesting, and processing plants creates odor, much of which is unpleasant. Using historic district building to grow and process cannabis is not in harmony with the surrounding area. And being in harmony is a criteria for granting permits. The businesses in the area, that Texas Yankee District, the Tringle Buzz Seed Boat, which is now a venue, Outer Chaos, the Grant County Art Guild Studio, other galleries, a bakery, a restaurant, and two hotels would be greatly affected by decreased air quality. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. With that, the section on community input is now closed. We move on to the next issue. Did anyone wish a short five-minute recess? Do I hear a motion?
I move we have a five-minute recess.
Second. We have a motion, a second. Those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Hearing now. We will be back in five minutes. Thank you. Back in our regular meeting session. And the next item is public hearing. Specifically, it's VA 25-02. A request for a variance to the minimum lot area allowed for an administrative subdivision of the property addressed at 413 and 415 West Bremen Street, Silver City, New Mexico. The applicants are Silver Casitas, represented by Smith Real Estate and Property Management. And I will ask, as I said earlier, does any commissioner have any conflicts of interest, expertise discussions, or financial interests to disclose in this case?
No.
Hearing now. Thank you. In which case, we still have a quorum. This is a variance. I will, as the presiding officer, handle all the questions and the flowing and things like that. We'll adhere very strictly to Robert's Rules of Order. flowing and things like that. We'll adhere very strictly to Robert's rules of order. We are now going to swear in those who wish to testify on this case. So if I could ask staff who will speak and anyone who is going to testify on this case to go to the podium, I will swear you in and we will need a log of those who have been sworn in. In order to speak in testimony, you do have to be under oath. Aye, please state your name.
Aye, Becky O'Leary.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That the testimony I'm about to give before this commission?
That the testimony I'm about to give before this commission?
Shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Under penalty of perjury.
Under penalty of perjury.
Shall I stay here or no?
Hang on a second. My first question is of staff. Did we get any emails or letters relating to this case?
For this case, we received two public inquiries and one letter was returned as it was unable to forward.
Thank you. I'm now going to ask staff if you would be prepared to present your case. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Request VA 25-02, a request for a variance to Section 3.4.2 Density and Dimensional Standards Table, to allow for the subdivision of a property into a smaller than the minimum lot size requirements for the properties addressed at 413 and 415 West Bremen Street, Silver City, New Mexico. The applicant is Silver Casitas LLC, represented by Ms. Becky Smith with Smith Realty and Property Management. Analysis. Ms. Smith submitted the variance application to the Community Development Department on October 27, 2025. The property in question is located in Zone Residential B2 in the Historic Chihuahua Hill District. The plot contains two buildings, 413 as the primary structure, and 415, a rental property that has been converted into a duplex. The Town of Silver City Land Use Code, Land Use and Zoning Code of 2010, Appendix C, Article 3A, Section 3.1, Intent and Purposes of Zoning Districts, defines the Residential B Mixed Housing Types RB2 District as "The Residential B Mixed Housing Type District is intended to accommodate low and medium, moderate-density, single-family, two-family, and multifamily residential development. To provide the land use protection of the area that, that developed in such a manner, the RB2 District shall exist until the adoption of the Amendment Official Zoning Map Designated RB1 and RB2. Uses and dimensional requirements for the existing RB District shall be established herein for the RB2 zoning district." Table 3.4.2 Density and Dimensional Standards defines the minimum lot area for a single-family attached dwelling unit in RB2 zoning district as 2,500 square feet per dwelling unit, and the minimum lot area for a single-family detached is 5,000 square feet per dwelling unit. This proposal would create two parcels. 415 West Bremen would be 0.112 acres, or 4,878.72 square feet, and 413 West Bremen Street would be 0.038 acres, or 1,655.28 square feet. After a departmental review of the application, code enforcement, engineering, fire, police, public works, utilities, and meters departments had no comment. Citizens' participation report. As required by Section 2.1.11 of the Land Use Code of 2010, the Community Development Department contacted 43 landowners identified by Grant County Assessor's parcel data by U.S. Mail within 300 feet of the project area. Of the 43 landowners notified, one letter was returned, unable to forward. The Community Development Department received two in-person inquiries, in which the enquirers wished to clarify the impact to their property. Findings. The Planning and Zoning Commission will apply and make relevant all seven of the following findings that had. Number one, the hardship at which the applicant complains is one that is unique to the applicant rather than one suffered by neighbors or the general public. And, two, the hardship relates to the applicant's land or property. Number three, the hardship was not created by the deliberate action of the applicant or by one under his or her control. And reasonable remedies are not presently available. And number four, the granting of this variance is in, is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan. And number five, the granting of this variance is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the Land Use Code. And number six, the granting of this variance will not be injurious to the neighborhood surrounding the property where the variance is proposed, and otherwise is not detrimental to the public welfare. And number seven, the variance will not result in the extension, expansion, or enlargement of a non-conforming structure in violation of Article VII, and will not authorize the initiation of a non-conforming use of land. Recommendations. The Community Development Department staff recommends the approval as it has met all of the following findings, based on the information submitted in the application. Number one, the hardship at which the applicant complains is one that is unique to the applicant rather than one suffered by the neighbors or the general public. And number two, the hardship relates to the applicant's land or property. And number three, the hardship is not created by the deliberate action of the applicant or anyone under his or her control, and is reasonably remedied, and reasonable remedies are not presently available. Number four, the granting of this variance is inconsistent, is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan. Number five, the granting of this variance is in harmony with the purposes and intent of the Land Use Code. Number six, the granting of this variance is not injurious to the neighborhood surrounding the property where it is, where the variance is proposed, and otherwise is not detrimental to the public welfare. And number seven, this variance does not result in the extension, expansion, or enlargement of any non-conforming structures in violation with Article VII, and does not authorize the initiation of a non-conforming use of land. Thank you, Chair.
Does any commissioner have any questions for staff? Does this complete your case in chief?
Yes, Chair.
Thank you. Next, I would ask if the applicant would please be so good as to present their case.
Thank you. Well, ditto everything Emily just said. Basically, in a nutshell, this is Silver Casitas wishing to sell the property. There's two dwellings, one is a duplex and one is a little house, and they, they will sell more readily and it makes more sense to just sell them separately. In order to do that, we had the survey done and the survey revealed this lot size exercise that we need to go through because the resulting, the first house that we have to, under contract to be sold, is the one with the smallest lot. And it's just a little one-bedroom house and the resulting lot size is, is proportionate to the house and it's not very different than a lot of other very small houses on Chihuahua Hill with similarly very small lots underneath them. So it's, it's not asking for a, anything that is going to be out of character with its surrounding neighborhood already. But there's also no other way to separate these buildings other than to draw the line pretty well where it is, based on other structures and trees and existing fences and things like that. There's, and there's no really any good way to take more lot space from the, the other side. It would just result in some long skinny strip or something for the purpose of adding square footage, but it wouldn't make any sense. So, nothing will change about the way these houses are used or their appearance or anything else. If we do this variance, it will basically just allow them to be owned separately, which I think will be ultimately good for them because they'll have owner occupants that will likely take better care of them than, you know, than is customarily seen for rental properties. These have been rentals for years and years and it would be nice for them to be owned individually by their owner occupants.
Thank you. And do you concur with the findings that the town, the staff report presented, or said about them?
I do. And I think, yeah, that these properties have been situated in this way. If, if you didn't know that they were commonly owned, you would assume that they were separately owned for just the way they look on the exterior. So we're just formalizing what already looks like it already is. That makes sense.
Thank you. Does that complete your case in chief?
I'm sorry, what?
Does that complete your case in chief?
I believe so, unless you have any questions.
Any commissioners have any questions of the applicant?
No.
Okay. Any questions from staff? Not hearing any. Is, I noticed when we did the swearing in, that it appears as if it was only staff and the applicant. Is there anyone who did wish to speak for this who has not yet been sworn in either for or against the application? Not seeing any. No questions at all from the commissioners?
Well, I have, I guess I have, oh, sorry, I guess I have one. What's the age of these houses? Did I read that in here? 1920 or something?
That appears to be about when they were built, 1915, 1920. And they don't even look alike. I mean, I think one was built later, maybe as a store building, because it sits right on the sidewalk practically, you know, and it's kind of hard to know what it was originally intended to be, but they don't look like matching houses or anything like that.
They don't. Thank you.
Thank you. In which case, I would ask for a motion. I would point out two things, that the motion is always phrased in the positive, regardless of how you intend to vote. And secondly, please identify the findings that have been met.
Yeah.
Do I hear a motion?
Yes, I move that this body grants the proposed variance to allow the subdivision of properties at 413 and 415 West Bremen, Silver City, New Mexico, under the documents labeled CU 2502.
Can I clarify the case number?
VA. Oops. Yeah, VA, I'm sorry. It was not CU. Yeah, I made a mistake. It's VA 2502. Let the record show that.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any debate? And I would confirm that all seven findings?
Yes, all seven findings as delineated by the staff and as required by this body. All seven of the findings have been met.
We have a motion and a second to approve VA 25-02, the description as previously read, with all seven findings being met. Could I please ask for a roll call?
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Commissioner Stone?
Aye.
Commissioner Moody?
Aye.
Chairman Wheaton Smith?
Aye. The ayes have it. The motion passes. Therefore, the variance request will be granted. The process is that in a relatively short period of time, Community Development will write a notice of decision, which will be mailed out. That notice of decision triggers an appeal period. And for the details, anyone who is eligible can contact Community Development for the details. But in essence, one has to indicate why you have standing to make an appeal, and secondly, what flaws you believe happened by the commission in coming to its conclusion. With that, hearing no other comments, this hearing is closed, VA 25-02. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a conditional use permit. We have two of them. And I don't normally read anything. I speak from the heart, but I'm going to read something because I think it will clarify some points. First of all, welcome to the P&amp;Z Commission Meeting, December the 2nd. Some introductory comments might help. P&amp;Z, Planning and Zoning, has two separate roles. One is to propose legislation, the other to hear cases. In its legislative capacity, more than a year ago, Planning and Zoning identified a weakness in the Cannabis Ordinance 1333, in that there was no separation between facilities, unlike eight of 18 towns in New Mexico that I studied. Planning and zoning thus conclude, included the recommendations to amend the Land Use and Zoning Code to add that requirement, which would be added to many other changes for the council to consider. Shortly before the council considered the new ordinances for adoption, a council added a restriction to cannabis facilities in the downtown historic district. On October 28th of 2025, the council adopted the new Land Use and Zoning Code of 2025. That is one capacity of planning and zoning. In its zoning capacity, quasi-judicial hearing processes, any application made before the council passed the new ordinance is considered using the ordinance in effect at the time of the completed application. The Planning and Zoning Commission is required to evaluate applications for permits by assessing facts taken from sworn testimony. The Planning and Zoning Commission is required to evaluate the required findings using the facts from sworn testimony. The Planning and Zoning Commission must issue a permit if the required findings are met. We're about to look at two cases which are conditional use permits. There are four findings that have to be met. And that was, I hope, will clarify some of the issues that have been raised recently. With that, we're going to open a public hearing for conditional use, 25-03, a conditional use permit to operate a manufacturing Class 1, 2, and 3, production and future retail cannabis within the historic downtown commercial district. At the property addressed as 205 North Bullard Street, Silver City, New Mexico, legally described a subdivision phrase of Block 69, Lot 5 through Lot 10, Part of Lot 5, Part of Lot 6, 0.258 acres. Has any commissioner had any expertise discussions, conflicts of interest, or financial interests in this case?
No.
No.
Three of the commissioners have not. I have received many phone calls, correction, a couple of phone calls and a lot of emails. In every case, I've made it very clear, I cannot read the email because of expertise rules. So I have forwarded the emails to Community Development, and those emails will be part of the record. They may be public input unless they're backed up by sworn testimony. I do not have any financial or other interest in this, therefore, I have not violated any of the expertise rules. There was a case where, two cases, where someone started to talk about the details and I removed myself from the room. With that, With that, I find that we do have a quorum, and we can continue with the case. This is a conditional use permit request. It's a quasi-judicial process, and I explained some of the basic rules with the statement I just read. I will be taking the questions and answers, and therefore controlling communication, we will be using Robert's Rules of Order. At this point, I would like to swear in the staff and anyone who wishes to testify under either for or against conditional use permit twenty-five dash zero-three. If you'd please raise your right hand and repeat. I, please state your name. Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That the testimony I am about to give before this commission
The testimony I am about to give before this commission
Shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth
Shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth
Under penalty of perjury.
Under penalty of perjury.
And thank you, and I'd like to verify with staff that we did have a log of all who had then sworn in.
If any of you have not signed this paper, please do so.
I'm sure I signed them all, didn't I?
I would now like to verify with staff, have we received any unsworn letters or emails on this case?
Yes, Chairman, we've received, let's see, three additional emails after the emails that have been explained in the citizen participation report, and I did receive an additional phone call.
And all the emails have been documented?
Yes, the emails are within the packet for the commission today.
Any information that we received that has not been sworn is information only. Sworn testimony is what is used by the commissioners to evaluate the required findings. I would now like to ask staff to present the staff report.
Request CU twenty-five dash oh-three, a conditional use permit to operate a manufacturing class one, two, three, production and future retail with cannabis in the historic downtown commercial district, at a property addressed as two oh five North Bullard Street, Silver City, New Mexico, legally described as subdivision Fraser, Lot sixty-nine, Lot five through Lot ten, part Lot five, part Lot six, point two, point, point two five eight acres. Applicants are Ronald and Yolanda Quintana. To operate a manufacturing class one, two, three, production and cannabis retailer within the commercial, downtown, highway, within the historic downtown commercial district, requires a conditional use permit for the use table in section three point two in the Town of Silver City's Land Use and Zoning Code of twenty-ten. The Quintanas submitted a conditional use application to the Community Development Department on October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. If the applicant receives a conditional use permit, he may move forward with the cannabis zoning verification process, and all applicable standards in section three point three point one H of the Town of Silver City Land Use and Zoning Code of twenty-ten shall apply. Class-one cannabis manufacturer, as defined in section three point three point one H one D one, as a licensee that only packages or repackages cannabis products, or labels and relabels the cannabis product container. Class-two cannabis manufacturer is defined in section three point three point one H one D two, as a licensee that conducts class-one activities and manufactures edible products or topical products using infusion processes or other types of cannabis products, other than extracts or concentrates, and does not conduct extractions. Class-three cannabis manufacturer, defined in section three point three point one H one D three, a licensee that conducts class-one and class-two activities, and extracts using mechanical methods or non-volatile solvents. Cannabis producer, defined in section three point three point one H one E, as a person that, one, cultivates cannabis plants, two, has unprocessed cannabis, cannabis products tested by cannabis testing laboratory, three, transports unprocessed cannabis products only to other cannabis establishments, or, four, sells cannabis products wholesale. Cannabis retailer is defined by section three point three point one H one I, as a person that sells cannabis products to qualified patients, primary caregivers, or reciprocal patients, or directly to customers. As stated in section three point three point one H two B one, the cannabis manufacturer class one, two, and three are allowed in the industrial and commercial highway zoning districts, and are also allowed in the mixed-use and commercial, the historic downtown commercial zoning districts with conditional use permit. Section three point three point one H two C states, a cannabis producer is allowed in the industrial and rural zoning districts, and in the historic downtown commercial and highway zoning commercial districts with a conditional use permit. Section three point three point one H two D states, a cannabis retailer is allowed in the commercial highway zoning district, and in the commercial downtown historic district, and mixed-use zoning district with a conditional use permit. After a departmental review of the application, the code enforcement, engineering, fire, police, public works, utilities, and meters department had no comment. As required by section six point one, or six point two point eleven of the Land Use and Zoning Code of twenty-ten, the Community Development Department contacted forty-five landowners identified by the Grant County Assessor's parcel data, by U.S. mail within three hundred feet of the project area. Of the forty-five landowners notified, two letters were returned as unable to forward. The Community Development Department received eight responses, six in the form of phone call, one in the form of a letter, and one in the form of public visit. All six phone calls and the public inquiry asked for clarification on the application. They expressed their concern and disapproval for the proposed use. Two of the phone calls received occurred after the staff report was submitted, and the letter received also expressed concern and disapproval over the use. The Planning and Zoning Commission shall apply and make relevant all four of the following findings at the request at hand. One, will not endanger public health or safety. Two, will not injure the value of adjoining our neighbor, our nearby properties. Three, will be in harmony with the area of which it is located. And four, will be in conformity with the town's comprehensive plan or other plans officially adopted by the town. The Community Development Department staff recommends this request be approved as it meets all four findings as required.
Does any commissioner have any questions of the staff?
One question that came up, or one issue that came up previously, just to help get some clarification in my own mind. One person had mentioned the number of facilities in the town currently. How many do we have on record?
Off the top of my head, let's see. There are twelve that I can recall.
Twelve, okay. And those are in the city limits, so it's not, we're certainly not just talking about the historic district, but then, given the size of the city, is that an inordinately large number of facilities, given our city size?
On the order of order, is that relevant to the case?
Trying to derive the per capita ratio of people to, of population to, to sales openings.
I find that that is not relevant to the
I understand.
Process, unless you wish to appeal that ruling.
I'm fine.
Any further questions for staff?
I guess I do have a question, and that's, how is in harmony with the area decided?
So, there are currently two cannabis businesses. One is a produ, a production micro-business located at four twelve North Broadway Street, where they are growing and manufacturing cannabis. They are licensed for manufacture, too, as well as a production micro-business, which allows them to grow up to two hundred plants, and they are currently operational. There is also another cannabis establishment at the, on Pope Street, which is also within the commercial historic district. That is cannabis retail, manufacturer, I think those are it. So, there are two already issued licenses in regard to the commercial historic district. So, since there are those uses in place, it is in harmony based on our legal advice.
Thank you.
Any further questions from the commissioners?
I have a question regarding finding number two. Will not injure the value of adjoining or nearby properties. Is there any evidence that is used to make that finding?
So, there are cannabis businesses that are within the commercial historic district, and to my knowledge, there has not been injures nature to the licensed cannabis establishments that are controlled under the Cannabis Control Division, but I can look into it further if you all would like evidence from maybe the assessor's office to see if there's been any impact. But as of the writing of this staff report, there had been no evidence of injures to property values.
Yep. Another, could you derive data pertinent to Commissioner Stone's question? Could you get data based on records of, maybe from the county treasurer, the, the sales price or the purchase price of a property prior to the initiation of a cannabis enterprise, and then a sale after their departure? Or could, in addition to that, should we get an appraiser who has knowledge in the business of real estate, who could derive that kind of data for us, just so we get some hard, hard numbers, as Commissioner Stone alludes to? That's kind of complex, but it's not just saying Commissioner Stone or Commissioner Bailey says, oh, yeah, the property values go down. We don't know, but the treasurer might be able to verify that, and an appraiser who's well-versed would.
At this point, I'd like to ask a question. This would be a legal question. Is the presumption that the Community Development Department is making correct assumptions on the findings? And my second question is, who has the burden of proof to establish whether there has or has not been injury to property values?
So, the burden of proof on the findings would be staff and the applicant. The, and what was your second question? I'm sorry.
And the first one, is there a presumption that the staff report is valid in and of itself?
Yes, when they're sworn in, the requirements state that it has to be accurate to the best of their knowledge. So, that's staff and all the witnesses.
Okay. So, at this point, then, the burden would presumably be on those objecting to or questioning the injury to property values?
Correct, to rebut the evidence presented.
Thank you. Does that answer your question?
Yes. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, does that question for staff, does that complete your case in chief?
I do want to note a clerical error that was within the notice letters provided on this case. It also included two eleven North Bullard Street, which is not part of this application. So, the applicant only applied for two oh five North Bullard Street, and two eleven was added in the notification letters.
Thank you. I noticed that the Land Use Code makes provision for small changes, so does that count as a significant change or not?
I don't believe that's a material change. The notice of what properties involved was accurate for two oh five.
Thank you. With that, does this complete your case in chief?
Yes, Chairman.
I would next like to ask the applicant to present your case, and if you could please address the four required findings.
So, my name is Ronald Quintana. My family is the operator of the proposed location, and I'd like to start off by saying, I understand your guys' concerns. I've seen a lot of you guys. I don't hold anything personal or nothing like that, so I get the concerns, especially with, and this has nothing to do with the next applicants, but with the former location of what was going on downtown, we had a problem with it as well, as being legal and running with, through CCD rules. So, I just wanted to say that before I present, so that way you guys know. So, my name is Ronald Quintana, and I'm basically going to read the letter that I sent out. We're asking for conditional use permit for a cannabis production, manufacturing, class one, two, and three, with a possible retail and consumption license located at two oh five North Bullard, Silver City, New Mexico. We have been licensed at nine ten North Pope for retail, manufacturing, one, two, and three, producing and consumption lounge for the past three years, with no violations, disturbances to surrounding neighbors. We are, our plans are to expand into two oh five North Bullard space, with the priority being a larger indoor grow space in the basement section of the facility, which is three thousand square feet, approximately, I should have put. This area will be utilized for production and manufacturing, one, two, and three. The production and manufacturing aspect is our main focus, with the plans within the next two years, and even with that being said, it could be three years, it could be four years for a retail. With the retail operation, that would be located on Texas Street. The entire Buffalo project was purchased in twenty twenty, with the main purpose of always being a producer. We always looked at the space when we first went into the location. We went, we looked at it, we went to go see structurally what was wrong with it, we took an engineer in there, looked at the pros and cons, there was probably more cons than there was pros, but we took on the space. And our goal when we saw the basement, because we had been closely following legislation for alcohol and cannabis since twenty seventeen. So, when we saw that space, the first thing that popped into my head was, wow, this is perfect for an indoor grow. Although there is other people that have opposed it with their comments earlier, it actually has the perfect climates and the perfect conditions to be growing. Most home grows start either in a basement or are in enclosed space that is like that. There was other, so anyways, that's when we purchased the property, and with that, with that intent since twenty twenty, when we first purchased it. Our goal has always been to turn that location into a multi-purpose venue, where it encompassed food, beverage, dance hall-ish sort of thing. I'll bring up a map here in a minute, so you guys can see our exact layout of what we have planned. Affordable living and affordable space for vendors. We're asking for permission to be doing this, because with the space down there, the three thousand square foot space, in all reality, that's probably the best thing that could be used for that space. If anybody has any other brighter ideas and wants to put in the revenue and pay for something like that, go right ahead. Like Mr. Richards said earlier, it's going to be expensive, but that's our cost to intake to make sure that we're doing it right. Proper ventilation, proper insulation, proper, just total reconstruction of that, of that basement area, it is going to be a big endeavor. And one of our biggest concerns, too, is because we want to have livable space in there, we have to take in consideration the tenants and future vendors that are going to be there as well, within our own space that we plan on renting out, to make sure that it doesn't smell, or it's not overwhelming. There's always going to be small little things. There's no such thing as perfection. We don't claim to be perfect, but I'll be quite honest with you, we try our best and follow the book to almost, to a T. That's why we, we have no violations. We've gotten inspected in the last three years about six times, which doesn't seem like a lot, but they are thorough inspections, and they are looking for violations. They're looking for a lot from us. It's not easy running this type of business. It's not easy running any type of business in this town, but we do it, and we've been doing it for the past sixteen years, and we've done it with our heads held high, and we go and we do, in my opinion, a darn good job at it. We're professional, we do what we have to do. In my opinion, a darn good job at it. We're professional. We do what we have to do. Sometimes we're not professional because just like anybody else, we're all human. We could get underneath each other's skin, say stuff, act a certain way, have a bad day, do all that stuff. But our intention is not to hurt anybody here at all, at all, especially people that we do business with. We appreciate you guys. So with that being said, I would love to pull up this land or our diagram to show kind of the layout of what we're trying to do and not just that. So we also have a letter from the town because you have to get water use permits. So we actually have permission from the city from back in twenty twenty-two giving us permission to use water for production. So this has been a long time thing. We, we went and filed it in short notice because we operate for other businesses. And we didn't know that this type of ordinance was going to get passed either. So I agree with the lady that said about not knowing or knowing too late and not having enough time to prepare and to do all that stuff. There is truth to that too, but we put that together to last minute because we had to apply last minute. So I'm going to show you guys the layout, basically the square footage. And this is the whole proposed plan for the Buffalo Bar that I've been keeping secret for five years. People have asked me and asked me and asked me and I don't say an answer. I'm a very private person. I don't, I don't like to talk about nothing, not because I'm trying to keep it secret. I just don't like talking about anything until it happens. That's the way that I've always operated. My family's operated, but we're here now, so the cat's out of the bag.
Uh could I, since we can't see it on the screen, could I ask if we, if it's a page in the documentation you provided?
You might. Am I, I don't know. I can't remember what I mailed out, to be honest with you, sir. I have so much stuff that is constantly being done. It is, is that it? It is that red map. It's a red outline. It is that. So there you go. So this right here is the upstairs of the original Buffalo Bar, which is going to be apartments. This is the original bar space. This is the area where we're building a kitchen. This is the dance hall area. The area proposed, and I think that you guys got a map that might not be accurate because the dance hall is in red. It's not supposed to be. So this area back on Texas Street, I could zoom in so you guys could see it a little bit better. So this right here is strictly going to be used for entering loading area for manufact- manufacturing and packaging area. That's what the intent of the use is for. This is also an area that in future, and this is future if we ever decide to shut down our location and our dispensary, what we have now. I don't want to have two dispensaries. The owner, which is my mother, she doesn't want to have two dispensaries. Our location of what we have is one. That's it. We don't plan on opening three dispensaries downtown. But just like other realtors and there is a lot of realtors in here and a lot of landowners, you never know. You might sell that property and we need to make sure that investment that we invested in, that we could still make do with an industry that we're still in. So that's, it may happen, it may not. And if we don't get permission to do retail space, we would like to get the permission to at least do the production and manufacturing. Our, our goal is not to have any signage out on the street. We don't want anybody to know that this operation is even planned there. If it was up to me, I would have kept it with nobody knowing, so that way nobody knew what was going down there. Now it's public. So now we have to have laser beam security, no? We have to have good security, but regardless of the fact, we still have to have it. So anyways, this is the basement part of where we want to have the grow space, which is underneath the dance hall. The whole entire dance hall, there is a, imagine that being a big basement down below it. We need to make use of that space. It's seventeen thousand square feet of space. The original bar was only using about six to seven thousand square feet of a seventeen thousand square foot facility. In order to go and pay for not just the cost that we've already undertaken. So I get what you guys say about being heavily invested in projects. If anybody knows about that, it's our family. We've invested deeply into this community. Whether it be the, be the location with formerly used to be Q's or this historic property of what we got into. We're not trying to change anything. We're trying to make it better and a better use as well as offering something for tourists, for local business owners besides just having a bar. So let me get into this. This bigger space, which is the dance hall space, this area, that's going to remain a dance hall-ish thing. We're going to make it into an indoor-outdoor beer garden type scene with vendor space for artisans, for anybody that wants to rent it out for a weekend, for a day, for two days, for farmers markets, whatever. We could get in there so that way people have an opportunity to have an affordable renting space for the community. That's one of the biggest issues that is going on within the community. There's nowhere that's affordable, that is redone, that people could rent out. Anything, whether for a tattoo shop, a small cubicle for someone that sells insurance, whatever they want to use. That's, that's the idea for that big space. So it's not going to be where someone comes in right off the bat, goes and sees a big cannabis sign. If anything, it's probably going to say like Buffalo Market or Buffalo Union Space because that's what the main focus is. The back area is strictly, that's a stairwell that goes down into the basement. This is another stairwell that goes from the dance hall into the basement. That's going to be closed off. And this back area is going to be the only area to get into this underground area where no one's going to be able to even see it. I understand again about smell, about all that other stuff. But just like Mr. Richards said, the filtration systems, if you want to do stuff right, you have to spend the money to do it right. Just exactly with, if we want to remodel this, everyone keeps asking us, when is it going to be done? It's going to be done soon, hopefully, but to do it right, it's a big venture, just like yourselves. You guys went and the upgrades when you guys bought the Murray Hotel, huge undertaking. And you're, we're still, still working on it. That's the same thing with us. Hopefully, the bar is going to be our first focus of getting that up and open. But this area right here is going to be for affordable living. And that's where the Texas Street is and that's where the cage fence is and all that stuff. And we've had the things of people saying, why don't you fix the facade of the outside? I personally don't believe in spending thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars on a paint job just to go back and having to redo it over again. When we do something, we want to make sure it's done right and just looks good for the community. Just like the same thing of what we do on the corner of college and Pope. I don't believe it looks awful. From when we first bought it, I think it looks like day and night. And we've upgraded the facility. We've made that. People first told us when we first went there to that location, don't do it. Don't get it. It's cursed. It doesn't do good. And try to convince us not to. Sixteen years later, no Q's isn't there. Times have changed. The economy's changed. Workforce has changed. People are interested in the, in the cannabis industry. People are interested in manufacturing jobs. People are interested in, in cultivation jobs. And when we say manufacturing, it's not industrial manufacturing. We're not making rubber. We're not making nothing like that. We're not making rope or, or hemp out of to turn, it's not, it's not true industrial manufacturing. But it is stuff that is considered manufacturing edibles. We're going to be making cookies and gummies and suckers and stuff like that. And, and the type of extraction that we're going to be doing, it doesn't, it's not, it's not the volatile, which you guys didn't allow. That's the stuff that makes areas stink. But to be quite honest with you, any of the indoor grows or manufacturers that I've been to in Albuquerque, Las Cruces or throughout the state, I can't smell it. I can't, I can't smell it from the outside. And even on the inside, the HIPAA filters and all the stuff that you have to get, you really don't smell it inside in just the common areas. So the, the filtration system has to be there. With the harmony of a location and stuff like that and people saying that it's going to attract bad people, we don't have anybody at our current location hanging out, loitering, going and doing that stuff. That reflects on the owners of a location. That has to do with whoever's running a business. Everything is determined by the individual who's running a business. We, we we try to help everybody and I don't judge anybody. If, if there's people that are in need that need help, we help them. But as far as having people that are, I don't even know, I'm not a judgmental person. So I don't even know what you would consider a, 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 what was the term? Less desirable, I guess, individual? I don't know, I don't, I don't know what that is because to me, we're all humans. But at the end of the day, we've never had any incidents. We've never had any cops called for, for any disturbance when it comes to cannabis. As, and as far as injunction with what the plan is, I feel this whole entire plan of what we have for the former Buffalo Bar and Dance Hall isn't, isn't conformity with the town's plan, with what's going on with the town. I mean, just yesterday, we posted a picture on Facebook of a simple hood. And it showed that a lot of people didn't know what we had planned. Because people were saying, I can't believe you're still calling it a bar when you're going to turn it into selling weed. It's not going to be that. It's going to be manufactured, but first and foremost, it's going to be the bar. And I don't even know what to call the dance hall, a garden, a beer garden. It, we haven't thought of a name yet. But it's not going to be used for cannabis. What else? Here's the letter from the town that back in twenty twenty-two, just so you guys could see, that it gave us permission at two oh five North Bullard to use the water thing and we didn't apply for a license because we still have to remodel it. So before we do anything, we have to remodel the location. We have to go forward. We have to put in our due diligence to make sure that every single one of your guys' concerns are met. From smell to it looking professional, security. I don't want none of your guys' business to suffer. I don't want our business to suffer. The goal is to work as a community, to make it great for everybody. And I hear all the time, a lot of preaching about community, community, community. Work with the community. Let's be a community. Let's work together. And, and if it's that bad, I'll tell you this much, if it was bad, my mom would have no part to do with it. And it's not. We run, we're professional. We're professional in what we do. The people that we work with are professional. The manufacturers, the local farmers, the local manufacturers, all the local people. What we do provides a lot of jobs and this is going to provide a lot of jobs as well. And as far as parking and all stuff, there's no parking downtown. You got, you got to figure out where you're going to park and just, and go walk around. But anything that we do, do here is not going to go and be a, a disturbance to the community or downtown. If anything, it's going to be the new and improved Buffalo space. We're calling it the Buffalo Project. But it, it includes food and beverage, cannabis, affordable living, affordable vendor, vendor space. And that's the whole plan. And three thousand square feet of seventeen thousand square feet is not a huge ask. It's basically making use of something that we also invested in and it hasn't been, it's not cheap. Construction's not cheap. So with that being said, you know, that's, that's, that's really it. And if you guys have any questions for us, I'd be glad to answer them.
Does that conclude your case in chief? Any commissioners have any questions for the applicant?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Quintana. I have a couple of questions regarding security. I think I heard you say, we will have to have, now that this has become public, uh which you would have preferred it not to be, right?
Not necessarily that it's going to be not be public. Just the fact that it's going to be in the front page and the fact that you don't want. So this is the thing, right? I feel that it's safer to be in town as far as security than on the outskirts or up in a warehouse, up in the hills. Because you have cameras, you have all that stuff, you have security locks, you have to have vault doors, you have to have all that stuff in order to get in. And I just wouldn't like it to be so public knowledge. I'm just a private person. It's no different than if we were to put any business or what we're doing as far as even just with the construction. I, I just don't like talking about stuff until it's actually happening. But your question with security?
The security is required by state law.
You, it is and it's, you have to have, it's pretty intense. You have to have cameras in every single room. You have to have cameras at every single entrance. You have to have vault, we have vault doors on all of our locations, especially where cannabis is stored. If you don't, you have to have, I mean, with your glass, you have to have security glass or security tank. There's, there's just a list of things that you have to have. And even if it's not required, we take every precaution because we just, we need it. I, I, I like the fact that we are downtown because it's close to the police station where, you know, air security alarm has gone off plenty of times. And because we forget to turn off, we don't set the code off fast enough. And they're there within thirty seconds of that alarm going off. So that for me is an insurance. So for being so busy, thank you guys. Because to be honest with you, that's pretty, pretty stellar and but that goes for all of us.
Excuse me, um what I'm getting at, in your own words, it's security against what? Secure, security to prevent?
Anything, just like the same security that we have for, of burglary. Just the same, the same security that we have to have at our restaurant. We have the same, almost the same security. It's kind of funny because people tell me all the time that they've never seen a restaurant have the type of security, you know what I mean? But it could be any business that's broken into regardless where it is. But I like to keep it private just because at the end of the day, it, it's anything of value. Someone's going to go in and try. Sometimes if they think they could get away with it or they think that it's not secured properly, that they're going to go into a place and go in there. I mean, it could be anything. I mean, it, it could be any, any business.
But this is special security.
I don't know if you'd call it special, but there's certain, there's certain mandates that you have to have that the CCD requires, yes, for security.
Because it attracts
Not because it attracts anything.
Criminal.
No, I think it's more so to do with, I think that it, I think, I think that it's more so just the fact that the federal laws and stuff like that, that it's still considered federally illegal and just the access to it. And I think it's more so for just like safety of in case. I, I really don't know why the security is so, so, but you have to have it, you know what I mean? But it's not to keep out. I guess, I mean, it's to keep out anybody that's trying to get into your building.
You don't believe that?
Uh please don't interrupt the speaker.
Okay. I don't, it's necessary because we have to have it. I like to keep it private for the same exact reason for the, when we first purchased the Buffalo Bar. I didn't want anybody to know. I literally asked our realtor not to say who bought it because I didn't want nobody to know. I just say we have to have extra security now within, whether it's three years or four years. Just actually just poking fun, but like why I said, we have to have lasers. So it's just being, I guess, facetious or comical almost.
Comical.
Yeah, like a joke, like we're going to have to have extra security, but we're still going to have to have the security that the CCD requires.
Thank you. Uh I have one more question, if I may. Regarding the basement, you, I think, made a comment, it's the perfect grow space.
It is.
Underground.
Yes, it's concrete. It's the, the temperature is naturally cool. So when we put the electrical and have to do all the stuff that we do down there, the conditions are much better than having a metal building and insulating it. It, it won't hold the temperatures. And as a grower and knowing the space and not like having to Google that type of information, I know what a good grow space is and it is a perfect conditional, like perfect space for that. When I first saw it, that's the first thing I was like, wow, this would make a great grow space. Yes, sir.
Is there any standard procedures to prevent mold?
You have to have, you have to have filtration system. It's like what Mr. Richards said. You have to have proper, proper. You have to have, you have to have filtration system, it's like what Mr. Richards said, you have to have proper, proper. Um, ventilation and anything that you do, put in like that. The construction industries, especially with that, they've gotten a lot stricter when it comes to. Giving you your permits of occu- occupancy. To have that type of grow facility. Or just making sure you have the right filtration, like our indoor right now, we have to have hip hipper filters, because we have a small indoor grill. But it's small, so we need not, not, it's not. We need, we're just gonna have to have bigger and better filtration system, what I mean by bet- better, just bigger, it's because it's a bigger space.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions for any commissioner?
Uh, yeah, and I, yeah, just had some things that were on my mind, uh, looking at finding number one that we have to assure is satisfied. My recollections are that the last guy that had difficulties with people, my sons would say, had difficulties with people sparking up. The last guy said he was gonna control that too, so, uh, are you gonna have security on the premises so that you could curtail that or?
When you say, when you say the last guy, you're talking about the place that's at, that was formerly at three oh six?
Uh, from what I, from what I understand, yes.
So that's, I I I actually wouldn't even like to be compared to that location.
That's fair.
It wasn't what we are doing, two, we had to file, uh. Follow different guidelines and procedures, we didn't look for loopholes to offer what we're doing. That was one of the bigger issues that I kind of got frustrated with was the fact that they were able to operate. And and do what they did, they did it within their means and legally, quote unquote. We just had to follow different guidelines like dosing procedures, if there was even in front of the location of where we're at now. If people are smoking something that they bought within our facility. If we see them, it is our job to tell them, hey, you need to put that out, or hey, that's what we have a consumption lounge for. Again, it's just based on the owners and the, and the individual, if if someone has complete disregard. For community safety, community, they're they're surrounding neighbors or just lack of of, um. Lack of appreciation for what everybody described for the town, they're not gonna care about the town, they're not gonna care about smoking, that's part of when we moved the dispensary. To where queues it used to be, that's why we kept smoking off of the patio, that area. Because we don't want it to be around where it's visible for the parades or for stuff like that, I know what you're saying about security. If it, if it comes to something like that and we need it and we see that we need it, then absolutely, but. As of right now, we really don't have security, uh, guard, you know what I mean, during, during the days. Um, during the nights are different and and that's just because it's it's downtown and 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 I don't think, and honest to God, and I will say this. We've been downtown for sixteen years there at that location. There's been an up thing in 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 activity in general of of just. Whatever you wanna call it, the less undesirable, criminal, whatever, however you wanna put it, it's been going on. We don't have that. At our location currently, and we've been blessed because of that. I I I don't blame nobody for those problems, I don't blame the police, I don't blame. Other business owners, I don't blame the town council and or any of the officials. I mean, for whatever reason, it's it's getting more apparent, but I don't attribute that to cannabis, and and the reason why I say that. Is because of our location that we have now, there's. There's nothing that goes on there other than people enjoying themselves. And that's what we're trying to bring. To downtown, if we decide to do that, again, we're not looking to necessarily move our dispensary there. We just don't know what might happen in five years, we might sell one oh one and wanna go downtown. And invest in that location and put a dispensary there, but our main focus is production and manufacturing. And when I said that, I apologize if I say, if I made it seem like it's a joke, it's not a joke. But at the end of the day, I just, I'm not a very, I don't. I don't have very many conversations with people, I don't get up and I don't talk to very many people other than this. Or to ask people how they're doing when they're any of our establishments, so when I say that we're gonna have to have more security and all that stuff. I apologize if I made it seem like a joke, it's just me trying to make light of. Of what really is going on, even though it is serious and I get it, because I understand what happened with your guys' stuff. And what you guys went through, it was serious, I'd be pissed, I would, I would also stood my ground. When it comes to someone being disrespectful to you guys as neighbors, that's not our intention. Our intention is not to be disrespectful, our intention is to run a good business and provide more jobs than we already do. Cause we do, and there there also was another comment too, that kind of made me upset of saying, someone should look into what. Donations or what? Good causes that we've given to throughout all of our years of business, the answer for that is too many to list. We donate, we put back in our community because the community puts into us. So we try to go and we try to do that, we just don't post it, I don't go and share it every time we do a good deed. But that's our main goal, is to provide something good for the community, so, yeah.
It may have been covered, but your license would that would actually, uh, allow the operation of a cannabis lounge or is?
Where's that? In this, it it doesn't say it, but again, any provisions that you guys wanna make and you guys don't wanna allow, even if it's no allowing of a retail. That was never the goal of having that to begin with, I put that in there because I never thought that we were gonna get to this point within the town. Of trying not to have cannabis in the historic downtown. If I would have known that and we would have done all that stuff. We would have filed or got, maybe started working on that area back in twenty twenty two. When the town gave us permission to use water for our production license, so that's, it's not, it's not. New, but if that's what I'm saying, if if we can't have a retail, and that's one of the things, because it's caused so much problems within that area. I mean, our main concern is having the production and the manufacturing, which that alone is gonna be, that's, that's the retails. Aside thing and the consumption, we don't even, we have our, our, our location at one oh one where we wanna keep, there's no plans on moving that. There's no plans of us getting this permit and then saying, okay, we're shutting down one oh one. College and moving downtown and gonna have two of these locations, I think that opening multiple locations in a, in a town. Has its up, its good and bad, but that's not our, that's not our, our MO. And I understand everyone's concern, I mean it, and when I say that, I really do, I get it, I could see the look on every, in everyone's faces, I could see the, the concern from. You know what I mean, the, the. The people that are here, but at the end of the day, you know, I just don't like being compared to. Other operations, you know, and if you look at market studies too. As far as property values, if you do a quick Google search, which that's the probably only thing, because I'm not a realtor, but when you do a quick Google search. It shows that the property values in Colorado, Washington, or any of these places that have gone recreational, they've increased. And it says it, contrary to popular belief, says that it increases, na- on a national level. Where it's been made legal, but there's always the exception to the rules, right? There's always the people that are bad actors or that do stuff wrong, I, not a bad actor. Maybe, because my joke wasn't funny, so.
So just, pardon my ignorance, but so when you say retail, you also mean. A place where people could consume cannabis on the premises?
Retail you're not allowed to consume, only a consumption lounge, so you could actually have a consumption lounge without having a retail, and every consumption lounge. Has its own retailer tied tied to it, you know, and I always say this too, anytime that anybody has any questions. When it comes to the ordinances or any of that stuff, ask me, ask Jeff, I'm sure even ask the people that are applying. For another license, because we have to know, and we have to know the do's and the don'ts, we have to know that stuff. You know, and and it 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 is hard, it's hard navigating through this business, we say it all the time, I mean, we're not doing anything wrong. And we still get nervous because it's new and it's new to a town, it's new to the state, so we get nervous, not because we're doing anything wrong. But just because it's, it's also our reputations on the line. And God willing, nothing ever goes bad, and we don't plan, again, I'm not trying to have a, a free for all at any of our locations. There's no alcohol allowed inside of, uh, no, inside of any of the retail spaces, there's no consumption allowed in any of the food and beverage spaces. We have to keep them co- completely separated, we're gonna have to put in walls, we're gonna have to do all that stuff. You know, i- it's, uh, we're just trying to eh, provide entertainment, that is still okay with bringing. Your kid, I have a little girl, a one-year-old daughter that I just recently had a year ago, and not me personally, I would, but you get what I'm saying. I would have taken her out on the patio there where, where the parade was passing by. I would have, I felt completely safe and we, we made it that way, so that way the population within the town felt safe going around that. We wanna make it acceptable, we wanna make it acceptable as, and as cool as having a bar on every corner. Cause I guarantee it, if it was a bar, going in, across like ten bars, people would be loving it. That's why when that legislation was passed, offering that type B license for ten thousand, everybody thought that there was gonna be. Fifty bars opening downtown. It's not, but if it was, everybody would be rejoicing, because everybody wants to be the next Bigsby, right?
Commissioner Moody, do you have any questions?
I do, actually.
Yes, ma'am.
So one of these places that says bar in here is actually a bar with liquor license?
It's, so it's a different property, so two eleven was the original, was the original Buffalo Bar, so that's, that's where we are gonna be having that, we don't. We don't even have the license yet, we have to go and 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 purchase another license, we have to find another license, licenses, liquor licenses are scarce. In the state of New Mexico, or they're super expensive in order to get the type of license that we want, we can't get those, that type B license, um. You know, i- i- it's just different, but that's also a separate discussion, you know, we're, we're here to talk about. Uh, a separate business, but yes, it is gonna be a bar.
Okay, one other question, and now you've talked about retail and vendors, so what does that entail, obviously not just cannabis sales?
There is gonna be, that's not part of the retail, so in that space where it says the bigger area.
Yes.
Where it says retail, beer garden, vendors and all stuff, that's for anybody that wants to sell jewelry, that wants to sell vases, that wants to sell. Their art because they can't afford an art studio and they wanna have a little twenty by twenty cubicle. That they could have some of their paintings, and that's the same thing on the backside of Texas Street, where it's not marked in red. That location is also gonna be used for, um, either vendor space or apartments. We're, we're, we're putting the architect stuff together to see exactly where we're going, but it's not, that has nothing to do with cannabis, we don't want cannabis. Where the dance hall is, we don't want cannabis where the bar is, we want it in the basement.
Okay.
Where y'all wanna keep it.
Thank you.
So you mentioned affordable housing.
Yes.
Where's the housing gonna go, how many units are gonna be in it?
So according to the architects right now and what we're kind of, we could fit on Texas Street, six. Six of, uh, apartments on that blank space if we don't put vendor space back there, and then plus the two above the bar, so there would be a total of eight. Eight, eight apartments or. Airbnb type place, I don't wanna even call them Airbnb because I respect hotels, so we're not gonna, it's gonna be more, more sort of the. Just long-term, just long-term rentals.
Now, in the, s- some of the verbiage here talks about using extractive processes and, uh, solvent-based. Uh, the non-volatile solvents, uh, if I'm upstairs in your apartment. Uh, is that, uh, are fumes from that volatile, uh, uh, chemical going to migrate up to me?
Again, we're gonna have to have filtration systems, but it's not, it's heat pressed, so with it being heat, the fumes aren't gonna be. They're not gonna be going. It's very minimal and it's not anything that's gonna harm anybody or get anybody high. By when it's extracted and if you put in the right filtration systems, again, all that stuff gets filtered out, I mean, everything, i- i- it's, it. You just have to have the right filtration systems, again, this is a big project and a big undertaking. We're gonna have to be spending a lot of money in order to be doing it, so that's where we have to make sure it's done correctly and and. It's still, we're getting the permission to do it. In order to go forward with plans that we first had, had when we first bought the building, I mean, it's just, it's seventeen thousand square feet.
Sure, now, every business has to have on file.
And, sorry, and the apartments aren't gonna be above any of the manufacturing area and the concrete slab. Between the dance hall. And all that stuff, if it gets through that concrete slab, I'd be shocked. It's like a bunker for like a bomb shelter, it's pretty crazy.
Commissioner Stone, do you have any questions?
No.
Commissioner Moody?
No.
Commissioner Valas?
Yeah, every business has to have on file something called, uh. The name of them is material data safety sheets and they have a whole lot of protocols in there for what, uh, different chemicals used on the premises, uh, or contain and. And then remedies and antidotes and that kind of thing, could you provide that? For somebody like me, for that volatile chem- the non-volatile, uh, solvent you're using?
So there is no solid, there's nothing, it's heat, it, so basically what we're doing is getting fresh flour. And washing it with water and ice, and then it produces hash. And then the hash gets pressed and then a oil. Wax substance comes out of that hash, or you could get the actual flour and press it with heat. And then an oil comes out, so there is, there's, there's water, so even on, on like rosin, what it's called. You'll see it when it says made out of water, ice and hash, or it's.
Sounds pretty inert, but when I saw the word solvent, now, one final thing, uh, you say you're gonna, uh, expand your employee, uh, base, uh. How many folks do you plan to hire?
You know, I have, I could give you a number, it, I mean, it could be arranged between ten to twenty employees, just for that part, and that's not even including the bar. Just the bar alone and all that stuff and the whole facility, it's gonna employ a lot of people, you know, and that's probably one of the biggest things that we. As a business, so when I say as a business, my. Me and my family, we operate the different businesses, you know, the way that we do. But I think that's the big- biggest satisfaction that we get, is the fact that we've, we've employed so many people, some people don't, not everybody likes us. But we employ people and we're able to, to do that. But, yeah, I, 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 ten to fifteen, twenty, just depends on, on exactly. How we set it up and exactly what we're gonna be manufacturing and and growing.
Thank you, any other questions from commissioners for the applicant? Staff, do you have any questions to clarify? With that, the next. Activity will be those who wish to testify for or against, and it's customary to rotate. Someone speaking in favor, then someone against, in favor and against, and again, you have to be sworn in to testify. Sir, please.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Jeffrey Castillo, I am a micro-business producer and manufacturer in Grant County, not in the city limits. Um, I am all in favor for, uh, approving this conditional use license for manufacturing and productions. As Anthony has stated, there are ways to mitigate all these people's problems like smell, no consumption on the property. Um, unlike the awful business that everybody remembers and gave the, the downtown cannabis. You know, seeing a really bad name, that was not even a legal business, um. Along with what Anthony's saying, the, the employees that he could, uh, you know, create revenue for, you know, more families and help pay bills and whatever. Uh, people to afford to rent houses or buy houses for, you know, all the good real estate people behind me. That all gets contributed by through this industry, um, in this town alone. Per month, total cannabis sales between all retailers in this town of Silver City is in the sum of four hundred thousand a month. Over seventeen million dollars was put into this industry from our cannabis, you know, community. Within the, the last three years. within the, the last three years, since two thousand twenty-two to two thousand five. Seventeen million dollars was poured in from Silver City alone. That's not including Baird, that, you know, anywhere else. Um, there is a lot of revenue that comes from this industry. Um, we do support, you know, all, you know, respectful, um, honest, um, and, you know, business-like, uh, companies that do come into our town, and Anthony is definitely one of those. He has supported our, uh, small farm, uh, throughout the whole year since the beginning. Um, I believe we both started doing the industrial hemp in two thousand eighteen. Um, we both could have been doing those illegal things that the Grateful Living was. Since way back then, we never did. We waited for the day of two thousand twenty-two, April, for the new recreational market to, to, to be able to apply for, to be in the license, to get a license from the, from the state. Before, it was only medical. There was only thirty producers throughout the whole state. Um, and there was no, no, uh, applic- we, we couldn't apply to be a, a, anything in the industry while it was medical. So, we waited out our years, we built our infrastructure through our hemp days, you know, playing with the plants, and we finally got to this state in our industry. And I really believe that it's not gonna hurt downtown. There's not gonna be no smoking downtown in his facility. Like he said, the door that accesses the, the manufacturing from Texas Street, that's gonna be a vaulted door. Nobody goes in there. Everybody that does go in there, employees have to wear badges. Anybody that comes to visit the facility has to sign in and wear a visitor badge. There's not gonna be no public in this production or manufacturing facility downtown. I know, you know, there's a production downtown, south of, of, of Bullard, and then of course, the, uh, Anthony's other, uh, north, north of, of, of Bullard. I haven't had one complaint of smell. Have, have, have you guys had any complaints of smell from those other two locations? Has, uh, Fat Boy Farms, outdoor greenhouse and indoor. Uh, has anybody complained about that? Has anybody complained about Anthony's? He has a consumption lounge where there is smoke. There's a different smell between fresh-growing flower and the, you know, burnt exhale of the smoke. It's a totally different smell. Uh, yeah, it, the smoke and the burn, it smells a little bit worse than the fresh. The fresh smells like roses, like any terpene that you could've. In this state, in this state, every household can grow up to six plants per household or twelve plants with two adults or more, a- at a max. There, there's probably a grow downtown Bullard right, right beside. Everybody's growing in their house. Everybody legally now in New Mexico can grow their own cannabis. To, so, so, to shun a business downtown and say that they can't do business because of a smell, I think we should start putting ordinances on, uh, the little ladies' houses that have basements full of cat. That is disgusting. That is repelling. I would not wanna go to a business if it smelt like cat poop. When you go to my facility, I took all the county commissioners over to my facility before we got licensed, and we were going through the same process in the county to get licensed to be out there. No issues. You cannot, you could smell it, but it smells like different terpenes, like lemonine, pinine, mercy. You know, different things that you find in all other natural plants and herbs are all in the same plant. The smells, the terpenes. So, to, to say that it smells for a, a production and manufacturing is different than a consumption lounge where it's smoked, and I still haven't heard a complaint about a consumption lounge. Let me, let me remind everybody, Anthony's consumption lounge was the second licensed consumption lounge in the state of New Mexico. He's done a one-hundred percent hell of a job, being compliant. You know, we go back and forth every day, oh, man, you know, this new rules are coming out. How are we, how is that gonna affect us, you know? How are we gonna, you know, go up to the legislators and, and, and? We're very active in this industry. Um, we're trying to do it right. Like I said, we could have done the bad thing that the Grateful Living did since two thousand eighteen. We chose not to. We love our community. We don't wanna hurt our community. We're not trying to sell the children. We're being responsible business owners. And, um, I think this ordinance, I mean, his conditional use for production and manufacturing should get approved. There is nothing wrong with that, and if anybody has any questions for me, audience, staff, commissioners, I'm all open.
In a few minutes, uh, a, a break has been requested. Did you wish to ask questions before the break? Or come after?
There's no, like, like, like we were saying, in the, the class-three manufacturing is non-volatile, uh, extraction methods. Literally, it's taking fresh flour, putting it in the freezer, putting it into a bat, letting it freeze, putting into a ice bath, washing it, letting the trichomes and all the, you know, collect on the bottom through screened bags, and that's it. There's no volatile solvents at all. Um, that's class-four manufacturing, which the town has already put a, you cannot do that downtown. Um, we don't even do that in our own manufacturing. We're also class-one through three, manufacturing and production. Um, any other questions? I'd love to ask. I pretty much know the rules of the book at, uh, the CCD. We've been following it since the conception of it, so if you guys have any questions, we will know the answers.
Motion for a short break, five-minute recess.
I move that we take a six-minute break.
We have a motion and a second for a six-minute break, and, uh, we will then reconvene afterwards. Please hang around in case there are more questions from the commissioners. And after you've spoken, then I will ask for someone to speak on the other side. Thank you. We're now in recess. Welcome back. We're back in session. Did any of the commissioners have questions for the last speaker?
No.
We're good.
Thank you. Is, would someone like to speak this time in opposition to the application?
I'm gonna jump up here quickly, cause I'm dying. Wendy, Wendy Raven Phillips. We own, uh, four oh five North Bullard, and some other properties downtown. So, we were. I can't say that I'm really for or against. I just want to get to some facts. Uh, because I think the facts say that we need to be against. Um, I have got nothing against people using marijuana. I certainly don't wanna say anything against his family, because I believe their, um, their thinking has integrity, but I think that we have different opinions concerning the same ideas, and I just wanna speak to that. Could I bring a picture to the? I didn't have anything to put on the.
But this is an example of, uh, how they're saying that they're not offensive or they take care of everything and they care about our community. This is the back of two oh five. And it's basically said the past five years that they've owned the building, and we've repeatedly asked them to just whitewash it, not spend thirty thousand dollars, but just, in fact, three years ago, I, three years ago, I approached them and said, I have a group of people who will just paint over the graffiti. But everybody who walks out of that, the cute little artist studios, face this building and see this every day, that's not respect, in my opinion. It, but in the bigger picture, it's just an example of how different people feel about what's important to them. Um, it's okay with me and, and a whole lot of other people that people don't think that that's offensive or rude. But to many of us, it matters. It faces the hotels. Um, it's a major walking street for our community and the Arts and Cultural District. So, um, and by the way, the, the, the post office stinks. We, we smell it all the time. It's eye-watering, and people have walked past it, and I remember a woman who rented, uh, out of my building actually thought she was having anaphylactic shock, which is ridiculous, but, but it affected her that deeply. I smell it, and I go, I wish I didn't have to smell that. Um, I don't like the smell of the different pots. I have a building, um, a ten thousand square foot building that has rental units, and my lease says you are not allowed to cook. You are not allowed to grow. Um, you are not allowed to smoke anywhere near the building. And after a new group of tenants, a, a, a husband and wife moved in with a son, uh, within less than a week, I went down there and I said, you guys, you can't smoke in the building. I smelled a pot. They said, no, absolutely not, we are not. Then you're cooking something, cause I can smell it. And I, to me, I, I just can't stand the smell of the stuff. I think I did too much as a kid. But I can't handle it at all. So, I know when I smell it. And what we figured out was they have a, a, a greenhouse somewhere out in the county, and they bring home their cooler, their big plastic cooler with their flowers that they've manufactured or picked, or whatever you're doing when you're growing the stuff, wrapped in plastic, and they'd get it home and they'd open up the cooler, and they'd wanna smell it. And it would permeate the entire ten thousand square foot home, building. It was that strong, and I had another tenant who would cook it. It's strong. The smell is strong. When I walked in tonight, I smelled it in the room. I can smell it on people's clothes. They can't smell it. They have no idea what they smell like. It's like the old cigarette smokers. And, um, I'm just saying that we are going to smell this stuff in town. We already smell it at the, at the, uh, post office on Broadway. Um, not all the time. I don't know what they're doing when it permeates the air, but you can smell it at the, at the museum. So, that's one thing. That's enough of that. Um, I just wanna go over, Meredith Blake asked me to read her, um, what she emailed in, um, because she wanted it to be part of the, um, she's the owner of the Hila Theater, and is that, I didn't understand, Simon, is that, um, part of the this part, or is that not?
That would be public input, because it's not sworn.
Okay, can I swear? Can I read it?
Provide it to the town as public input, but for it to be usable, and this is the hearing in question, it must be sworn testimony that commissioners can then use to measure against required findings.
So, she already sent it in?
And if that's the case, do we have it, do you know? A full page document. Yeah, then that, that's public input, as opposed to testimony.
Um, if I were to read through some of it, would that put it into testimony?
It would still be that statement.
Okay.
And I do not believe that would be admissible, unless the attending, uh, hears has a input on that.
You're correct. It's, it's outside testimony. It's not subject to cross-examination.
Yeah.
Well, some of the things I was gonna say for myself can, I, it's similar, so I'll just stick to my own. I think it'll be close. Before I start talking about certain ordinances, um, and, and the Arts and Cultural District, can I just list a couple of questions that I'm curious about that I, I'd, I'd like to hear an answer from?
If you could address the questions to me, then I may redirect it.
Okay. So, if, if you, if, if you approve the, uh, the C-CUP, at what point in time would you add, uh, to the stipulations that are part of the CUP? Does that have to be tonight?
When we evaluate the testimony that we've heard, then we will be discussing, more than likely in executive session, what other additional approaches we may make. We may specify in general what conditions might be added, but not specifically. The specificity would happen when the notice of decision is created. They must be created out of our general guidance on the conditions.
So, when would that be taking place?
When we come to a decision on this case, community development will then go and digest everything and create a notice of decision. And during that notice of decision, the conditions will be very specific. We will simply provide guidance for them. And when that is ready, then it'll be given to the chair, in this case, me, to sign off on it. And then once that happens, that begins and is mailed, then the appeal timeline begins.
Okay, so would that be happening tonight?
Uh, with, oh, no, it'll be quite, it'll be maybe up to, what, fifteen days, if I remember correctly?
Not the appeal, but the, but the adding, the stipulation?
That'll be done within the next typically fifteen days, if I'm correct.
Yes, Chairman, the notice of decision will be provided to the applicant within fifteen days of the, of hearing the application.
Yeah.
So, the public doesn't get to participate in the stipulations. This is it, what we have tonight.
We will create any stipulations, assuming we do create any, based on the sworn testament that we've heard and our review of the required findings, and we will say what those stipulations should typically cover with enough guidance that community development can then articulate in more detail.
Okay. Can, can the town create new ordinances in the future that will, um, impact the new businesses that are applying now?
There are issues with retroactively doing things, and I would refer that question to our town attorney.
Uh, no, that's ex post facto laws are unconstitutional, so you can't make something illegal today that was legal prior. So, that's where you get the grandfather clause, but new ones you can prevent.
Okay, so is it possible to have alcohol and cannabis in two oh five North Bullard at the same time?
That's probably a speculative question that I would ask the town attorney to answer.
It's like being on the hot spot. Alcohol has to be separate. We can't be, you can't have alcohol within the, um, retail area or the cannabis-licensed area.
So, is manufacturing and growing a li- a part of the licensed area?
Yes, that would be a cannabis-licensed area.
So, what they were asking for tonight is not possible, because there's there's, they wanna do a beer garden over, oh, in the same building over the, uh, cannabis-growing area.
It physically separated, though, so the licensed area would only be the basement, from what I understood from his plan. And then the back area where he's doing loading. So, if the alcohol license is physically separated, I believe that's allowable. But again, the state will make that determination, whether it's the alcohol gaming or the cannabis, uh, division.
And it should be borne in mind that the conditional use permit is merely, merely the first step, and then the state gets involved.
Okay, so, so what I hear you say is that the, um, the application for the use of cann- So, so what I hear you say is that the, the application for the use of cannabis, manufacturing, retail, is only the red lined areas in that address?
You would have to ask Anthony on that.
That, no, I'm, I'm asking you because the, it seems like you, they're asking for the entire building, 205 North Bullard, to be a manufacturing, production and retail property. And, and at the same time, they're saying that they want to run a beer garden in the same building on the second floor or the first floor. So that's, so I, I would just hope, I can't answer this, it doesn't sound like he's going to answer it either, so I would just hope that you would take this into consideration, that they're asking to build a business with alcohol served in the same property above their growth facility. I don't even think they understand what the rules are. So there are state laws about not being able to do this. So I know that the state will deal with it, but I would like to see our town include that if they go ahead and pass this, which it certainly sounds like the staff wants to do. If you pass this, that, you take that into consideration. That's just part of my testimony. My next question is, how long, once you approve, if you approve their CUP, how long do they have before they have to actually build their business?
So the application is for the applicant for the property. I don't believe there is any stipulations as to a timeframe as to when they have to implement the use. So the use is given to the applicant based on the notice of decision. That would be the decision that is rendered this evening.
So it's open ended, it can take five years?
Potentially, yes.
Is the consumption, he didn't apply for consumption, they didn't apply for consumption on this P, the CUP? Is that just automatically that, so does that mean that they don't get to do consumption because they haven't applied, or is that part of it already?
So within our ordinances, retail and cannabis consumption lounges, you have to have a retail license to be able to operate a cannabis consumption lounge. We don't have any regulations as to use of cannabis consumption. So it is directly related to the use of retail.
So they, so this, this, if this is approved, they can open a consumption lounge?
That would be dependent on state licensing from the Cannabis Control Division.
Okay.
Again, this is merely the first step in a series where the state gets involved.
Well, this is the big one, though, isn't it? So, okay, so I'm going to start with some, some, some history. And it's good, the first thing I'm going to address is health, welfare and safety. The ordinance 1282, which, well, first of all, there was an ordinance in 1041, or in 2001, ordinance 1041, about the town, and I, I won't use the right language, but I'm just going to say the town ordained that, that clean air was an important issue that relates to health, safety, and the health, welfare and safety of the town. So it's in the ordinance that, that, that the town considers air quality part of our health and welfare. And then ordinance 1309 discusses nuisances as, quote, nuisances are detrimental to the health, safety and welfare of the town's inhabitants. So that's listed in that ordinance also. So the town is saying, has said repeatedly, that, that air outside and inside the buildings directly affects our, our health, safety and welfare. And Meredith's emails states that with quotes and everything. So I think that that should be, I mean, I, I can't give you all that information. I knew it all this afternoon, but I can't remember it all now. So I'm just going off my notes, but I think that there's enough information in ordinances that, that, that air affects our, our health, safety and welfare. And it affects different people differently. That's true. But what we're talking about is a town that, that, that decided quite a long time ago to, to focus the, the historic downtown area into an arts and cultural district. And I don't agree with, with these folks that, that cannabis businesses are, I know that they're labeled, that, that their signage at Little Amsterdam says culture, I'm not sure what kind of culture they're, they're supporting there, because Amsterdam's all about being able to get away with all these illegal activities. I think it was probably an interesting choice for their businesses.
Can you relate that to the issue at hand?
Well, the idea that we want to be an arts and cul, arts and cultural district, and what does cannabis have to do with culture, except in Amsterdam, which they call themselves? So it's, it's just the idea that, well, okay, so that goes to harmony. Ordinance 1173 and ordinance 1230, again in 2014, reiterated clearly that the town's preferences for arts and culture, as far as economic development goes. So those ordinances speak directly to the town deciding that they were going to put a lot of their effort into developing the downtown areas in arts and cultural district. And that I don't understand how cannabis is cultural. It limits a whole lot of people, you can't, you know, children can't do it, families won't with children, many of them won't come in, maybe some of them will. But how can you have a, an arts and cultural district that's trying to provide something for everyone and, and bring in very large scale businesses that completely cut families and children out of the picture? Not, let alone people who don't want to be involved in those kinds of decisions, drugs. So I'm just saying that as far as harmony goes, the town has stated clearly it wants this kind of a thing, and you've got a whole town showing up and saying, that's not part of what we're here to do, what we want to do, what the town has decided for us to do. And I think that speaks to harmony.
Thank you. I had to point out that table 3.2, which is the conditional uses or uses period, is something that the council approves. And the job of the commission is not to determine whether that is or isn't appropriate, it's to apply facts to the table.
Yes, but the fact that they just approved after working for two years together and didn't even let, well, I'm not going to go there, but, to not, to, 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 I mean, we've had, you and I have had lots of conversations over the years about our, our, our codes and our ordinances and our zoning. And we, we all know that this stuff has to be cleaned up and fixed. Well, they just cleaned it up and fixed it. They all agreed that they don't want cannabis in the downtown area. So I know that that doesn't count for this, because they got their application in on time, but it does speak to the intention of the district and to the harmony of the district and to how upsetting this is going to be to a lot of people and how it's going to affect people differently. So I was just speaking to harmony and, and health and well-being, and I think I'm getting close to being done, you guys, just one, one more second. I think, I think that's all I can do right now.
Thank you. Does any commissioner have any questions for the speaker?
No.
Thank you very much.
I have one more question.
Okay.
So, speaking to the, to the manufacturing at, at the old post office, what are we supposed to do when people complain about the smell there? Do you want them to just start calling the police, or, I mean, how does that work when, when these folks come in and you can smell, smell stuff and the hotel guests complain? And how, how does that work with, with the town at that point? Because people want to know. They already want to know.
Director?
So if it would be deemed as a nuisance, based on the regulations that code enforcement has to enforce, then it would be something that would be addressed?
So, does that mean they could lose their, their CUP? Could, could, because there, it's a nuisance and?
So nuisances, typically we look for compliance. So what it would be, would be a notification, and if they don't comply, then they would be cited.
And could citing eventually affect their, their conditional use?
I would have to look into that.
How about the attorney, would he know?
Commissioner, point of order, I'm not sworn in and I'm not giving evidence or testimony. My clients are up there, not over here. So I'm not comfortable answering.
My answer would be
Oh, sorry.
That any violation of the ordinance is called a municipal offense. Municipal offenses are handled by the municipal court. If that triggers, or if the police or code enforcement chose to elevate that to the state, then the state could do its own investigation. But that would be independent of the ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
And again, I'm not a lawyer, so I cannot provide legal advice. I'm offering my understanding of legal information.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is someone else who wishes to speak in favor of the application, I'm trying to alternate? Let me get other people who haven't spoken yet.
Hello, thank you for being here and listening. My name is Loretta Marufo, and I've lived in this community for 44 years. So I just want to say that I'm a co-owner of High Lonesome Cannabis, and that is a micro-business of production and manufacturing facility out in the county. We do business with Buffalo and, and other vendors here in town. We do weekly deliveries and pickups to other manufacturing facilities that are doing the same kind of manufacturing and growing that Anthony is proposing here. And when we go into those facilities, there is never a smell outside or inside the facility, because they've done what they need to do to install appropriate ventilation. There's been a, a lot of fear, I feel, around things here that people are speaking to that they don't really know. And so I just want to say that the, there's very strict state testing and inspections that would flag any mold, any pesticides or any microbial concerns that the public would have. No person that is putting hundreds of thousands of dollars into a growing facility is going to build their facility so that it's filled with mold. That's not going to happen. And this is probably irrelevant, but because the idea of culture was brought up, my parents used to shop downtown Silver City for everything, their groceries, their clothing, their sewing materials, whatever they needed. And when the arts district took over and that became a thing, they no longer felt welcome in their hometown, in their homelands, in their community.
Thank you. If I could ask the advocate, Hugh, to, you had a question, I believe, for a previous speaker?
So it wasn't necessarily a question, it was basically, they addressed the back of Texas Street, and it's not that we refused or said F you to anybody. If you see the tagging on it, it's the same person that's been tagging all the youth murals. So imagine if I went and I put a big, nice whitewashed wall on the back of that, the type of stuff that would go up, just out of disrespect. I don't like seeing that either, but again, what I stated, whether it's 30,000, whether it's 2,000, whether it's, whether it's 1,500, whatever the price is, we're going to have to go back and redo it over and over and over. Actually, and the issue that she was talking about is a thing that I walked into on a meeting of grants that I got a text saying that they were talking bad about the Buffalo project and how neglectful we are of the building. But my response was, you guys don't have any idea of the cost and what we're doing in the planning to prepare to do a renovation. And the response to me was, don't blame us that you financially can't afford this project. How disrespectful is that? It's awful. That's the type, that's the type of culture that wants to get brought in? That's the type of community that wants to get brought in? The type of culture and community that we're representing is one that has been here since before the town was even incorporated. That's how long my family's been here. So when I say culture, it's about the culture of what represents the Buffalo bar and that Buffalo thing. It's always been looked at as the, not, I mean, kind of like a renegade type place. It's been known for bart, bikers, bar fights and all that stuff. And we're not even trying to bring necessarily that culture back. We want it to be where it represents a, a melting pot of different ethnicities and population of people in, in just everything, food, vendors, artisans. So, but as far as that, that back picture of me saying F you, that, that's not the words that I said, because I'm a very blunt person as well. If I want to say that, I would say that. So it's offensive to me when they think that we're neglecting the building, when we already have hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars tied up in the basic demo and renovation of the bar. But that backside, it actually is going to be getting a nice paint job, as well as the front part of, of the Bullard part. Everything just has to work in stages, and it might not be on your timeline. But again, if anybody wants it on their timeline, purchase the building from me. If not, then it's on our timeline and we're working on it. And we're trying to do things the right way. I just don't like being disrespected or my family being disrespected. You can't come up here and say that you don't mean any harm to us and then come up and say what you said. It's a back, it's a backhand, it's a, it's a backhanded compliment. So for me, we are working on it. We're working on the facade as well as everything that goes, that's going on, on the inside. It's more than just paint. It's more than just texturing of the walls. It's a lot. And we can afford it, that we're just doing it smart, just like the rest of downtown that's boarded up, that has the facade that looks awful, the art shops that have been closed down, the storefronts, like you said, it's, it is dying. Not because of the arts culture, not because of you guys. I don't blame nothing on nobody. It's the culture itself of this. There is a huge rift in this community, and it's because of issues like this, because of the backlash, because of people having such pushback on just good, hardworking people. So for anybody to get up here and say anything negative about what we're doing and the financial stake of what we're putting into this community, it's absurd, it's crazy to me, it's so disrespectful. I have, if not equal or more financial stakes with my family in this town. Our town is, our, our family has been here since before the town was, I'm serious, before, I don't even know where my dad's family house is from. So no one's going to tell me that anybody cares. You can nod your head, you could go and you could roll your eyes, ma'am. But at the end of the day, no one's going to tell me that they care more about this town. But at the end of the day, no one's going to tell me that they care more about this town than my family, period.
And I think at this point, I'm drifting off a little bit. At this point, I also want to say something else.
Simon.
I am currently speaking in a round of order. One of the provisions in a quasi-judicial setting is to limit repetitive testimony. That does not mean that you can't speak. But it means, I think, the message has been made very clearly about ODA as being a concern. So the commission is making note of that. So in order to move forward, because there's a lot of people who want to speak, if you want to make a brief reference to ODA, yes, otherwise I would prefer to limit that so we can hear as much testimony as possible. You wish to speak again?
Just quickly. I think you misunderstood. I was not saying that you said [BLEEP]. Okay? I was just showing the graffiti on the back of the building that said [BLEEP]. And so I think that was a misunderstanding. Graffiti should be painted over. Every town knows that graffiti should be painted over. It's a five-minute thing, black paint.
Thank you. Is there someone who would like to speak in opposition to the application? Sir?
Good evening, chairperson, honorable members of the planning commission. My name is John Eater, and I'm a resident of Silver City. Before I go to my prepared remarks, I just want to suggest that should you seek to approve this this evening, which I will say will be a huge disappointment, that you construct a condition of approval that all of the proposed amenities mentioned tonight, the affordable housing, et cetera, et cetera, all be completed prior to an occupancy permit being issued. The apartments should be move-in, rentable, ready. All off-site and on-site improvements should be done. The complete facade on both taxes and boullards should be completely reconstructed and painted prior to any occupancy. And I also have to wonder, if you have multiple apartments upstairs, does that turn this into a multifamily housing building? In which case, do you run into issues with smoking ordinances with multiple family housing? So that, I really, you know, I've served on two city councils, and I know that all the promises made while the fate of their permit is in your hands, and they'll say whatever they think they want you to hear, those things tend to disappear amazingly after the approvals are issued. You know, the sidewalks don't go in, not this project, but the lights don't go in. You know, people forget, they move on. So I would suggest that you acquire all proposed improvements ready and placed prior to day one operation of this. You know, I'm not against cannabis, and I don't think this is a cannabis yes or no issue. It's a location issue. In fact, I'm high, the support of cannabis businesses operating in appropriate locations. You know, there seems to be a great pressure. I think, you know, the Buffalo Bar sat derelict since I moved here five years ago. And in talking to the applicant, he said, oh, I don't have any money. I just do work on it when I get grants, which I don't think anybody's giving grants to cannabis dispensaries. So all of a sudden, now that there's a time element, and the time's running out under the old rules, there's apparently no shortage of funds to do all these great improvements there. So I have to wonder about that. Somebody's trying to railroad this project. I haven't figured out who in town, but somebody's railroading this. It seems like there's an inordinate amount of pressure to approve this project. And I have to say, it doesn't matter whether it's pot or whatever. It doesn't matter how much money you spend. It doesn't matter how long your family's lived here. It's a matter of location. My wife and I have tried to figure out the current status of these applications and what really is the document that governs it. Is it the old conditional use permit or the recently enacted code adoption, which included prohibitions against cannabis use in the historic downtown? So, you know, really, what does this fall under? And what are you trying to accomplish with the new code and the new amendments prohibiting cannabis in the historic downtown? You know, the planning file on this project was amazingly thin, almost empty, as I have come to understand. And it may be the case that we're putting the cart before the horse, publicly noticing this project before all the approvals have been met. It's our understanding, it's really not complete at this point and hasn't been. I think it's in the best interest of Silver City, the town of Silver City, to slow this process down. I have to question how well-acquainted city staff this body and the town council are with a cannabis manufacturing facility. Have you ever visited one? Have you seen what the ramifications are of one? So, you know, you're proving something that you may not have any technical knowledge of. So all you can do is go on the assurances of the applicant that there'll be no smell, there'll be no fumes, there'll be no whatever, negative impacts. And once you approve it, you own it. The city's approved it. I, you know, I would strongly suggest continuing both this item. And I have to say, my comments apply to both items, this one and the next one coming up. But I would strongly suggest that this body consider continuing this for everybody to get a better chance to familiarize themselves. You know, the staff report for this meeting tonight, I don't know if it's ever shown up. Is it here? It's not been online, to my knowledge. Many of the minutes, staff reports for like the last six months for this body are unavailable on the city's website, I've been told. I think we just need to do some more due diligence. It's a major impact on our downtown. I guess I would just close by saying, as I mentioned earlier, I've served on two public bodies, and there are the regulations and the codes and the laws, and then they're doing the right thing, and there's a difference. And I trust that all of you are wise enough to do the right thing, and I trust that you will this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Does any commissioner have any questions for the speaker?
No.
Okay. Next, since someone was to testify in favor of the application.
All right.
And you were sworn in, correct?
Yes, I was.
Okay, thank you.
Exciting night in Grant County. I wasn't planning on speaking. But first I'll say, my name's Laura Aubrey. I own June Junes, which is a catapartner to Anthony's current business. I didn't, I wasn't planning, so as we've been sitting here, I've been making little notes on my phone. But first I want to say I have no personal or professional investment in any of this. I don't consume cannabis, so it's not even something that I would patronize to use for that possibility. I also want to say that I completely understand both sides, and I know I have some customers and even regulars here. And I want to say that I respect your opinion, and please still patronize my business, even if we don't have the same opinion. And that I do believe and I've seen our community coexist with mutual respect, even if we've had differing opinions. I want to say that the unknown is very scary, and also what we feel we do know is scary. I feel like a lot of our opinions and understanding are coming from the grateful living. But I think that it's important for all of us, and especially you all, to look at, and I trust that you will, just look at these isolated applicants and their businesses because they're not that business, they stand on their own. And I think that, I wasn't, partially why I wasn't going to say anything is because I can see there's a lot of people talking. But I realized that I do have a unique perspective and experience because I am their current neighbor. I don't know Anthony well. I didn't even know that his real name was Ronald. We've spoken a few times. One of the times we did speak is when I was working on my building. So I've been his neighbor for 11 months, and I would say that myself, my partner, and our two minor children have probably been there every day the last 11 months. One time Anthony did ask, I think, how things were going, and he did tell me this idea for the Buffalo Bar to have a unique space where possibly other businesses could come and, you know, set up tables or be vendors. And I thought that was really cool because as a business owner myself, I'm thinking about how I can benefit, of course, myself and my family, but also how I can benefit the community. And when I see other businesses not only thinking of themselves, I think that that's really cool and can be really great, you know, thing for our community. So even the idea of being multi-use, I think, is really unique because there's, in the things that he presented, there's housing, there's production, there's, you know, other businesses could be there. It's multi-use, they're not just thinking of themselves. And I think that's very unique, and we need to see more of that. And sorry if these thoughts aren't in order, and if I'm talking fast, I'm just trying to get through it. So I think that we can also have, as someone that's recently renovated a historic property downtown, that we need to have grace and patience and understanding for someone working on a project. I've lived here for nine years now this month, and since my time here, I've seen that building just sitting there. And so I think the fact that their family stepped in and is willing to do something, even if it's not what we would have done personally with that building, I think that they're doing something to really improve downtown. And I do understand that we do what we can as time, resources, and finances allow us. Let's see. So, oh, I thought it was interesting that a lot of people, I don't think, realize that there's already production happening in the old post office building on Broadway. I personally haven't smelled anything from the post office or from their current location, as I'm really close to them. I've also have only witnessed their building being continually improved at their current location off of Pope Street. Recently, we've all seen it be painted, a new logo's put up. I feel like the facade of their building is really beautiful and has only added to the beautification of downtown. I understand some people might think that maybe he's giving lip service, but I feel like we have a unique opportunity here to see what they're already doing and what they have been doing. And I think that's the greatest testimony someone can give is how they've been conducting themselves in business. I did understand that one of the commissioners, is that your title? One of the commissioners was asking about security and why there are higher security reasons for cannabis locations. And so during one of the breaks, I looked it up. And one of the reasons is that there needs to be higher security at cannabis locations where there's, you know, production and manufacturing because there's a risk of it being sold on the black market. And as I understand it, this is how I thought of it in my head, if someone were to go into a canning facility for beer, for example, if they took a six-pack or even a stack of six-packs, it's not going to be worth as much as taking actual cannabis. So it has a higher value. The other reason is that a lot of, because cannabis is still heavily federally regulated, a lot of large banking institutions won't work with cannabis, the cannabis industry, or they can't. And so there's a lot of cash on hand at these places. And I thought that was interesting, and since it was specifically brought up, I thought maybe you'd find it interesting too. I think that, yeah, I hope that decisions are made based upon fact, the report and testimony, and not upon your personal opinions as you're representing us as a community and not yourselves. And I did want to mention too, as someone who has young children, and I employ a lot of young people, I've noticed that a current theme in our country and in our community, in the recent political panels that just took place locally, a big thing that kept coming up was small businesses and the future of Grant County and the young people here. And whether we partake in cannabis or not, or are for or against it, it is just a fact of the way that our society is moving. That is a part of the future generation. And I think that it's something that we need to base our decision upon, not necessarily what's happening now, but in the big picture for Silver City and that historic district. And I did want to know, it probably goes without saying, that my business is family and kids-centered. And as someone who has young children and has a business that caters to that demographic, I don't find being so close to them to be negative at all. I don't feel less safe. I don't feel like they're attracting people that aren't safe. I think that the more activity we can have downtown and the more small businesses we can have downtown, the better we all are for that. And I hope that no matter what the decision is, that we can all come together. So if this goes away, like if this is passed and the community isn't happy about it, then I hope that we can still see for the better of our community. Let's all work together. And I think that's all I have to say, and I apologize for not planning, and I hope that wasn't too rambly. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. Does any commissioner have questions for the speaker?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I will repeat something I read earlier because the question was raised. It might help simplify things. Any application made before the council passed a new ordinance is considered using the ordinance in effect at the time of the completed application. And that was a question a previous speaker addressed. Secondly, I'll repeat two sentences because it addresses timing. PNC is required to evaluate applications for permits by assessing facts taken from sworn testimony. We can't use our own personal experiences or knowledge or whether we're in favor of something or not. We are very strictly limited. That's why these hearings may appear rather short. I would also point out that Planning and zoning has spent over a year working on the land use and zoning code, and those meetings are public. And we've certainly heard input there. So I would suggest that, in fact, a lot of thought has gone into this. I think it's very important that you bring up these points, and I've been making notes of them for when we do deliberations. Is there someone who would like to speak against the application?
Hi. My name is Karen Heimer, and I'm going to keep my, I'm going to not say what I was going to say because it's very repetitive, like you said about the smells and all that. But I am here to formally oppose the proposed cannabis facilities. As the owner of 209 West Broadway and the operator of Light Arts Space since 2018, I've invested significantly in the area because of its vibrant character and the strong Main Street program we have, which supports small businesses and preserves the district's unique appeal. Now I'm going to go off script. So I recognize that I've only lived in this community seven years. My building was built in 1905, and over the years, it has been a hardware store and two department stores. And I really want to acknowledge that the longtime residents of Silver City, you know, used to come downtown more, and there is a rift. And I don't like that. As a newcomer here, I want to embrace, and I, and this is a bigger conversation, you know, and not really quite to the point here. But I guess I just felt like I needed to say that. My concern is that, as somebody else stated, the town has adopted the downtown area as an arts and cultural district. And I didn't make that decision, you know, but I bought into it because I'm an artist, and I have an art gallery, and I support local artists, and I try to work with our community. And that And I try to come, work with our community and that is my mission. Um, and, you know, in terms of the smell and, you know, I can't speak to the production because I don't know enough about it. And I can believe you when you say there won't be smell and, and all of that. And I have to believe that, I guess. Um, but I have experienced consumption, uh, on the streets and in the lounges. And I, I do wanna say to your family that, uh, I commend you in having really one of the best restaurants in Silver City. Mix Thirty-Three is just fantastic and I, I so appreciate that. But having been there many times, although not very recently, the Buffalo Bud next door has impacted my, my experience at Mix through the smell and the sound and, and the visuals. And so, I, I love the fact that someone, in, in our case Anthony, has chosen to purchase the beautiful historic Buffalo Bar that has a very varied history that I understand through photographs. Anyway, that's another story. But, um, uh, but I would, I would love to see, well, okay, I'm sorry, I am off script here and I'm very tired now. But, um, you know, one thing about your current location is that you don't have neighbors really close except the bookshop, the, the bike stores. Okay, so, uh, you couldn't really impact much else around there. And also tourists don't walk along that area and that's a huge difference in the kinds of properties. The Buffalo Bar is in the heart of our downtown and, you know, my business depends on tourism. And I can't provide you proof that this business could hurt my property values. How can I provide that kind of proof? But if tourism drops and, and does not increase, that affects my property values and my business and my income. And so, I mean, this is, these are tricky things, but, you know, I, I had a fantasy that maybe you were gonna move Mix down to the Buffalo Bar and expand it so we could have a fantastic restaurant right in the heart and keep production and cannabis on the edges of the town. Um, which is where I think it belongs. Um, and that, that's enough for me. But anyway, um, I appreciate you listening and, you know, I hope we can all come together more as a community. And, and also I, I, I understand you say about your sense of privacy and not revealing what you're doing. But, you know, I think if you're really seriously thinking about doing something where artists could have a space or vendors or whatever, you need to reach out to us. You need to reach out to the community so we could-
And vice versa.
I beg your pardon?
And vice versa.
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah. So, you know-
At this point, I, I need to bring you back to relevance to the issue at hand. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's enough.
Thank you. Can you do a short response?
So, when it comes to kinda some of the points that they've been saying about even with the liquor laws and stuff like that, everything has to be subdivided. It's no different than in bigger towns of having a plaza. And everything has the same address, but it's A, B, C, D. So if you go to bigger cities, there's a bar on one side of the plaza and then a dispensary or in some cases, right next door to each other. It, it just needs to be completely separated where it's separate entrances, no access at all. So even with what we did inside of the, where we're at current location, we had to separate that. Even with this, as far as, as, as far as the order that you're talking about with, uh- They're in Mix, it's okay. With Mix, we are actually investing in a better filtration system to deter that more. Because it's a outdoor lounge, there's no real way to stop the smell from coming from outdoors up and around. So we're just, we're getting a, a better filtration system so that way you're not able to, that smoke when people are smoking doesn't travel up and over. But at this location, there's not gonna be any consumption. There's technically not gonna be any retail that's not in the plan. It's production and manufacturing. So that infiltration of smell of what they're discussing, it's only when the consumption lounge too is packed to the brim, there's no, it's hardly ever, nobody really even uses the consumption lounge. So, you know, it's one of those things, but we, we have taken all that stuff into consideration. Because the last thing we wanna do as well is offend, is deter our own business. Or if we're working with other people, to deter business from the bike shops or the co-op or anything. So again, we're working on that filtration system.
Just so you guys know.
Can I ask, uh, Commissioner Stone, you have a question?
Thank you, Anthony, um, for your continuing testimony. And I really appreciate the fact that you brought up the rift with a capital R. Uh, though I realize that's probably not completely relevant and germane to this very specific conditional use permit application. And yet, um, the testimony tonight is kind of a example of the rift we all are trying to avoid. So in, in one way, it's not relevant and I have to think about the rules of order here. And on the other hand, it is, I think, the core issue here. How, how do we, uh, heal that rift? And your testimony has been, or your comments have been nothing but professional and I think good-hearted in good faith. And I wanted to make that comment. And I wish I could ask you to go on more about how to solve the rift, but we're gonna be here half the night.
I just hope that people know that I'm not trying to be disrespectful either by saying how long our family. It doesn't, you, you are right when you say it doesn't matter the time or any of that because we all have vested interest. I think my biggest thing is just the fact that, I mean, in my own way, I consider myself an artist and my canvases are these buildings. And for the most part, we're doing, we're doing all right, but, you know, we're, we're, we're doing the best that we can. And then there was the comment too that was made saying that we're waiting on grant money. We're not waiting on grant money. The bank that we work with allows us to do sections at a time. Everything that we've done is out of pocket, except for one grant. And that was the one grant that we got to help with the demo work for what we're doing on the big side. And that was on that same thing where I walked in and I got a message saying that they were talking negative about that building. But if I would have never been invited to that, I would have never known about grants and getting grant money for downtown. And it, and, and that, that needs to be clarified because I, I just have a lot of passion for what we do. And everything, smell, the HVAC, everything that we're, that we're, that we're working on is gonna be done correct. And it's exactly with what you said, it's not, it's not a, it's not a lip job, you know? We, lip service, there we go, lip job. Just, uh, just to say, just to say, cause it sounds good. That's part of the reason why the Buffalo Bar is taking so long. Because we have to follow building codes and or, like, it, it's, it's a lot. And it's not too much for us. We're just doing it as we can and a lot was affected with COVID. I could go on too about all the, the, the stuff, but it is getting done. And the bar is gonna be our first point of focus. It is, it's gonna be open hopefully by this upcoming summer. So with that being said, you know, that's the bar.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, someone, uh, please.
Sorry, it's a little, it's past my bedtime. Um, okay, so, I, I was, we have to talk about, in my opinion, we have to talk about the issues that are the findings of the use permit because staff found there were no controversy whatsoever. And no staff in other departments found any. So it left us at the last minute to try to understand it. And, uh, what I wanna speak to is, and also, there may be no complaints at the post office. Let's talk about, um, smell.
Can you, can you mention what you want?
Oh, I'm so sorry, yes. I, I, a sign that I'm tired. My name is Marcia Sue Lustig and I'm a resident of Silver City. Um, and I did own the building downtown until two years ago. The, uh, the, I have do a bit of business and spend time at the museum. And in August and September, it was ripe there. And I didn't know it was a grow facility approved by, but if that is an indication of a functioning HVAC system, it was potent. Wendy wasn't exaggerating. I experienced it several different times. I didn't call and say anything because I thought it was someone's private home and I was just like, uh, what is that? And then went on about my business. So I wanna mention that. Um, we don't seem to know how to contain those odors. Um, I will add, just in terms of professional background in this, is that as a community development director for many years in another state, I was required to identify, locate, um, locations and vendors for, uh, medic, for marijuana legally to sell and to bring the community together so that everybody from the police chief to grandmas, to the people who wanna do the business, figure out how to make it work. So I do know something about it and I'm not just, you know, speaking off the hip here. So, um, how, will it be in harmony? Again, I wanna say I was surprised by staff in saying that the harmony is now dispe, is now grow facilities and dispensaries in the downtown. I would say that what we're looking for in harmony is places for people, families, kids, to be able to walk around comfortably and go door-to-door shopping, which is what you wanna do in a downtown. Um, there's such a thing as oversaturation of a use. Um, with the expansion of Mr. Quintana's New Amsterdam Buffalo Bud Dispensary, how much consumption, manufacturing, and retail of cannabis is appropriate in our historic downtown? Do we wanna be the cannabis kings? And again, the manufacturing in particular, but all of it, but the manufacturing, it is a very expensive endeavor to make it so it doesn't smell. When, and if you're growing it all year round, it's a permanent thing. And that's what you do when you're indoors. You can grow it all the time. Um, our job, your job as I see it, is to protect the merchants, the businesses downtown. And in typical form, the businesses that like to be around cannabis production and uses are other related cannabis services. Is that what we want? Again, I highly agree with Mr. Eater that it's not about, I don't care how many dispensaries are at our town. I care how many are in the downtown. And in particular, I just don't see a manufacturing facility. The two that exist, I've, I frequent, the wonderful, there were two restaurants, restaurant that Mr. Quintana owns and I never smell anything there, straight up. I don't smell it. The other place, the post office, go down there and check it out. When, not now, because it's all been harvested, I would imagine. But it was ripe. Ask people who are, who work at the museum. I'm sure they smelled it a lot. Um, anyway, um, let's see. So that is the potential injury of, um, to the value of adjoining properties. Those, uh, our historic downtown streets thrive on locals and tourists being able to stroll down the street, popping in and out of restaurants and retail shops. Selling, consuming, and/or manufacturing cannabis products does nothing to lift up the adjacent or nearby businesses. There are a number of types of businesses that are inappropriate in the historic downtown and cannabis is among them. You naturally want businesses that will attract other businesses in an important mix beneficial to our community, not create more vacancies or cannabis-related services. To support the existing historic downtown businesses and the long-term goals of filling vacant storefronts in the historic downtown, cannabis-related businesses should not be permitted under any circumstances in this area. And again, this is not related to the unfortunate business that was here. I think that we are all smart enough to discount that particular business. Everybody knows, but what we do notice was that it wasn't able to be managed by the town. That is one thing that is able to be noticed. So, you know, once you give a use permit, good luck doing anything, changing it. It is, um, not something very easy. It's very expensive to try to take back. And this I know. Um, most people who shop for cannabis are focused on conducting their transactions quickly. On the other end of the spectrum are those who just want to chill and hang out. Neither are conducive to retail exploration. Manufacturing cannabis products is a use with no place in the mix of our downtown retail merchants and restaurants. The likelihood of neighborhood nuisances caused by these applications clearly outweighs the need for the businesses in our historic downtown. I heard you say, I believe, that the onus is on us to prove that there'll be impacts. But, um, it, no mention, uh, we're not the experts on the nuisance ordinance and the fact that there will be nuisances associated. And it would have been nice to have heard how they were gonna be handled rather than no issues whatsoever, complies with everything. Um, okay, we talked about oversaturation. Cannabis has many positive uses. But you and the town council should be doing everything you can to lift up and protect the local merchants in our historic downtown. Three cannabis businesses in our historic downtown, two of them across the street from one another is not the way to accomplish this goal. Thank you.
Thank you. Does, and, and we do have your, um, letter by the way on the record and thank you very much. I was following that. Is anyone else who wishes to testify? Next. You go ahead.
Um, good evening, senior chair and members of the commission, staff. Uh, my name is Mary Reagans and I am a resident of Silver City. Um, I spent a lot of time the past two days really counting syllables in terms of my timing here. So I wanna be sensitive to the late hour. I do have some situations I'm raising that you have heard more about tonight, but I want them on the record. I believe my letter or email is one of the ones that you have on, on file as well. You should know that my comments tonight are a summary of that information for the benefit of you all and the public here.
And for the record, the commissioners, we do have your letter. Thank you.
Thank you. So residing in Silver City, attending local events, supporting local merchants and downtown viability, with no bias towards the applicants or cannabis users, I object to the CU applications before you tonight. Protecting Silver City is, I also wanna say, some of you know that I come from also a professional career in municipal planning. And I'm happy at this late hour, even though I've been testif, hearing all these testimonies, I think I bring to my testimony something you haven't heard yet tonight. My city planning hat is gonna shine brightly in what I have to say to you, but, tonight. So protecting Silver City's character and promoting walkable, livable cities guides our comprehensive plan in Silver City. That is a direct quote from the, the comprehensive plan that Silver City follows. PC and council October meetings identified preserving Silver's aesthetics as a key priority. Reinforced through adoption of the revised and further amended land use code. Aesthetics of Silver's character has been extolled for decades. Beginning in 1978, when the National Historic, uh, National Register of Historic Places recognized Silver City as a nationally recognized historic district. Preserving Silver's historic character keeps people here, it draws people here, and it provides an exceptional backdrop for events that we all attend and love here. Downtown, downtown commercial historic areas create a highly visible public face. A community's character-defining front porch. And Silver benefits greatly via Main Street and the Arts and Culture District designations that it holds from the state of New Mexico. Land use and historic district ordinances protect Silver's character. Land use and historic district ordinances protect Silver's character, support its economic and social vitality. The word "social" actually exists in both of those ordinance that I referenced. In alignment with our comprehensive plan, fostering a walkable, inviting downtown where people can linger, shop and socialize towards maintaining a vibrant, family-friendly, economically strong downtown. Cannabis establishments undermine this goalkeeping, excuse me, cannabis establishments undermine this goal, keeping people from spending time downtown due to concerns about potential behaviors of some cannabis users or discomfort from cannabis odors and secondhand smoke. I confess, I am one of those people. I suffer from asthma, I smell it, I leave, which impacts my ability to enjoy my life here in the city. The conditional use applications for both locations, I'll talk about that later under the second, uh, case before you. The CU application before you, as well as the next one, for locations that stand less, less than 250 feet apart, fail to protect community character or support Silver's social vitality, making them inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, violating your criteria number four. CU, the CU requests also don't meet criteria number three before you, which requires harmony with its surroundings. Not defined by code, Harmony's defin, Webster's definition of harmony provides, quote, "a pleasing arrangement of parts, congruence and agreement," unquote. Harmony does not happen by approving cannabis uses on our community's historic front porch. No matter the applicability of previous or current ordinances as addressed by the chair, the, the planning and zoning commission's approval findings number three and four provide the bases for rejecting these requests in front of you tonight. As, as to staff's point regarding the similar facilities downtown, I submit that the stated locations by staff are removed from the immediate downtown in, and in which these applications are located, and therefore do not apply to the harmony situation that they've referenced. So specifically to the application at 205 North Bullard, and this is also to the point addressing, uh, an item that was raised tonight, I have real notice requirement, I have real, I have real issues with the requirements for public notice on this application being heard before you tonight, given the interior connection between 205 and 211. The agenda item is 205. We have heard from the applicant, as well as other folks, including staff, that this proposal before you, long range, is for another address as well, that the applicant indicated plans to address a, yet a third address on Texas Street. None of those have been published in the, um, in the required public notice documents. We heard staff mention that there was an error in the letter that went out to adjacent property owners that included one of those addresses, but they noted for the record that it was erroneous. I pose to you tonight the real question of was legal notification provided appropriately for this public hearing, given the expanded addresses that have been discussed tonight as part of this project. Additionally, the vague application letter suggests that the project includes 211, an address associated with a longstanding liquor license presumably still active. And I mentioned the additional matter of the, the Texas address that's not provided. Frequent owners' public statements of renovations underway will return 211 to its prior use as a bar. My next comment speaks to the question that one of you had posed to the, um, the, the city attorney. New Mexico State Statute 262C6 of 2024 summarily states that a cannabis business cannot share premises with a building licensed to sell alcohol. It doesn't mean separation by floors, I don't care how much concrete is there. It says premises, and land use code typically defines premises as just that, the building, the place that the address, um, covers. Approving the CEO appears to endorse a potentially unlawful combined use that could be used by the applicant when seeking cannabis licensing from the state. It is important to publicly clarify the need to conform with state statute. What I don't believe I said in this, and correct me, I'm sorry for being repetitive, is that the floor plan that I reviewed in staff's office showed that these two addresses, 205 and 211, were linked interiorly by open doors. For those of you who don't know, architectural drawings, this symbol like this on a drawing indicates a door. It may have been in the basement, it was unclear to me what I was looking at in terms of the level of the building, the floor plan, but it was clear that interiorly, the plan I saw in their application showed this two buildings connected. That gets to the issue of violating the state law, which I realize you guys don't enforce, but the fact that it's shown on their drawings as a former development review person suggests to me that this applicant can go to the state and say, well, the town of Silver City said it was fine, they saw that my, on my plans, that the interior was connected. That's a concern I have, just from a process standpoint. My second point on this address is that a grow facility, there's been plenty of talk about this tonight, I echo some of the prior comments about, do we really have the ability to know the answer? A grow facility without proper odor mitigation techniques would create harmful air quality downtown, contrary to the PC finding of criteria number one. My third, um, comment, and, mm, this is going to sound harsh, but I'm just going to say it as I wrote it. With the recent grand opening of the applicant's cannabis canvas, can, cannabis campus, those are my words, because that's how I perceive the site. With the recent grand opening of the applicant's cannabis campus anchoring the corner of Pope and College, I question the aesthetic appropriateness for expansion just six blocks away in Silver City's intimate downtown. It's just too much, it's saturation. We heard the applicant suggest that one of them wouldn't, like the, the existing one might close, but that's a might, we don't know. We also know that the, if the CU was adopted or accepted, the new site might not open. I'm saying as proposed collectively, it's too much. Just last week, the application was still incomplete, despite it having been in, included on an agenda published for this meeting on November 15th. This seems unusual to me, given my experience, and appeared to be an effort to get the application in the pipeline, the day before the council's review of code updates that called for stricter regulations. My understand, my point about the incomplete application is at the time I met with staff, the civic participation component required in your application had not been submitted, in my mind, deeming the application incomplete and questioning why it would hit an agenda. It also didn't address specifically your findings, criteria one through four, as required in the application. Despite that, I do want to thank staff for, um, their avail, availability to me during research, um, I did to present tonight. And I also want to thank them for pointing out the town's YouTube channel, which I didn't know existed, um, and causing me to take four hours of my life and watch all of your proceedings and all of the council's proceedings to prepare for tonight. I did that because prior public meeting minutes, meetings from those prior meetings, minutes from those prior meetings, in my mind, were incomplete and didn't provide a basis for some of the amendments that were, uh, recommended by you and then approved by council. So I took the time to watch those meetings on YouTube to prepare for tonight. That's a lot, I'm tired, I'm sorry for my attitude. I swore to God I would never participate in another public meeting, having staffed this kind of situation for 20 years, but this one hit me. Um, I care about our downtown, I've spent many years in, back in the early 2000s, doing historic documentation for the town in support of its historic districts regulations. I'm very proud that our ordinance, actually, the historic districts ordinance is not just a design ordinance, it specifically states its intent to preserve the social character of our town as well. I know that you all don't enforce that ordinance, but again, because both your ordinance and the historic districts ordinance are written in support of our comprehensive plan, I do think they have bearing here in front of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Uh, there was someone at the back, ah, yes.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask a question?
Please, go ahead.
Yeah, this, uh, two of the speakers have brought up this concept of saturation. So, uh, our directors pointed out that there are what, 15, uh, 15 existing cannabis establishments?
Into voda? Can you relate the number or the saturation to the required findings?
I keep coming back to, is there a per capita ratio of how many, uh, I guess I can't bring it up then, okay. So saturation will sit out there, folks, you'll have to wonder what it means. I, I don't know what to say, I don't know.
Is, is saturation an objective standard or a subjective one? And that's the issue, which is why I questioned the relevance.
Well, I just was trying to get, people keep bringing it up, and so I was trying to get, wrap my mind around what, what is it, how, how do we quantify such a concept? How many businesses per capita?
I'm not sure, Mr. Chair, if that question is directed to me, it was stated... After I made my comments, I have an answer, if you're interested in hearing that.
Can you connect the saturation to the relevance of the full findings? Thank you.
So for me, it's about, um, it's about the harmony clause, is that number three or four? I can't remember.
Yeah.
Um, three, thank you. Harmony, according to staff, has suggested that it's about, oh, there's other of these downtown, we can have more because they're harmonious with the guys up the street. My issue is that we're talking about a very different, I mean, Silver City is small, granted its historic downtown is what, six blocks one way and five blocks the other? The two establishments cited previously are contextually beyond the area that we're talking about for the application in front of you tonight. Yeah, it's a few blocks away, but it's very different, it's a very different character, that area on Broadway at, by the museum and that area south of, on Broadway. We're talking about the primary thoroughfare that defines the downtown character of this town, its front porch. So for me, the saturation issue is, um, um, having one that anchors where the main thoroughfare cuts into college on the north end of town, and then having another one six blocks south in such a small geographic area, that to me speaks to saturation too much and therefore not harmonious with that very special two-block area that we're talk, not two-block, but you know, two, two parallel street area, that our council has said, in that area, no. And I get that that's a later decision, but so, but it's kind of all wrapped up together. I hope I answered your question.
Thank you.
I gave you fodder to ponder, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other, okay.
Oh, my name is Michael from the Murray Hotel, and I just, uh, have a, I want to make a clarification from something that the attorney said in one of his comments. Uh, he mentioned the, the idea that there was the grandfather to allow things to happen, uh, but amortization in New Mexico zoning, what is amortization? It is a zoning tool to end the use of what was legal and when established, but no longer permitted under the current rules, such as a business in a residential zone. Uh, so I want to clarify that there are, uh, processes that the town council can do to actually eliminate things once they're already put in place. And I would hate for this to happen for the type of business and the type of money that they're trying to put into something, uh, for, for that, to go that direction. Uh, and so I just wanted a clarification, uh, for, uh, for that. And then I need to place a couple of things in the record. I did speak in the public comment part about our hotel in that we have operable windows, double-pane windows from our renovations, and, uh, that, uh, we are very susceptible to, uh, increases in sound and, uh, and odor as well. I also wanted to reiterate, reiterate that the issue with the, um, the helmet factory here in Silver City, that there's been issues that have not been able to be resolved once a business is in place. Uh, and, uh, here we are, and it's because of grateful living that people are pushing really hard because they feel like it's brinksmanship right now, because there is not, it does not seem that the town has the ability to change things once they've happened. Uh, and that's why there is such a thing called the amortization, uh, process. So, uh, the, uh... I also want to know if Anthony's, in his letter, he says possible consumption. He's talking today about possibly eliminating that, or what, and, and can he, if he gets permission from this body? I don't know.
I mean, to me, that's not the key factor of anything that we wanted to do. I put it in there because all these ordinance got brought up in, when we first purchased the building. There, one, wasn't any ordinances, two, whenever we went for our production to get the water rights from the city, there wasn't any of these ordinances and we were granted to use the water for production. I included all that because I'm, I don't know what's going to happen in five years from now, I don't know what's going to happen a year from now. If someone were to come to, to me tomorrow, just like if someone I'm sure were to come to you tomorrow and say, here's a million dollars, you want two million, whatever yours is probably worth more than ours, but in my case, here's whatever amount of money, and we want to purchase it from you. And if we could alleviate, just like with any investment, you know, the end goal is to either pass it down to your kids or to sell it and let the next person do what they want with the building. So if someone were to come with me and say, come to me and say, we want to buy this property, that's the reason why, because we wanted to do that down there. If it's not granted and someone says that we can't do a retail or we can't do a consumption lounge, I'm not, I'm not going to be like, oh, I hate every, you know what I mean? It, I understand, that's what I'm trying to say, I understand where everybody's coming from. Everything is about compromise. Every, every, every business, every venture, everything within a community is about compromise. So when I said possible, that's why I said that, and even with retail, that's not on my, my radar. And so I get where everybody's coming from, like even bringing up the liquor laws and all that stuff, everything has to be subdivided, everything, there's walls that have to be put up in place. That's our initial floor plan from our architect that drew up just the whole broad spectrum of our, of the footprint of the building. There's still a lot more steps, I mean, it's not like the grow space, if we are allowed to do this, is going to open up tomorrow or a year from now. And, and I get what you're saying about timeframes, but in order to do it right and to do it with everybody's issues and everybody's concerns and to address all of it and to subdivide the building correctly, and to answer your question, there is only two addresses. It just takes up from Texas to Bullard, there's no, there's only two addresses, 205 and 211. So with that, 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 there, there, there always been, everybody even thought at one point it was one address, you know, because they've always been together. When they bought it back in the eighties, they assumed that, but I could ramble on. I don't care if there's consumption. To me, that's not what's important. What was always the main focus and the goal was to have the production and the grow space in that basement with the ability to do manufacturing. And it's not in the thing of where, I get the picture that could be brought up in someone's head of the concerns and like what that entails, but it's not going to be like Willy Wonka's Chocolate Factory for weed, you know? That's not what we're trying to do. We're just trying to expand on our grow facility of what we already have in order to be a competitor in this competitive market. And, and, and to put Silver City on the map for having... And, and, and to put Silver City on the map for having a group of individuals, like I said, I work with Jeff, I work with other growers, I work with all that stuff. Just a collaborative space that we could all just be part of and, and work together and put Silver City on the map for that. If you go to Albuquerque, you have big, you have big companies that have it. You go to Farmington, they have them. You go to Hobbs and all these other locations, they have it. We're just trying to go and be competitive in the industry, just like I am with cooking. When I cooked, I wanted to produce the best product and, and we tried. And we sometimes don't, like food is, and sometimes with cannabis. We're just taking pride in the product of what we have, and we just want to further that. But as far as consumption and all that stuff, if it's not on the property, that was never my main focus. My main focus for that property has always been food and beverage. That's going to be, that's what the storefront's going to look like. From the outside looking in, you're not going to even know a production facility is there. The, you're going to have food and beverage, and it has to be subdivided in order for it to be legal. And what I mean, that wall's partitioned off, there's still a whole lot of construction that needs to go into it.
I need to bring us back, I think, to focus a little bit. Um, I think the, the issue of partitions and things is more an issue for the state, if I'm correct, Director?
So this is the first step in a many, a multi-step process. So this is based on the use. So whenever it comes to the cannabis licensure, that will be vetted by the state, which their requirements are to have what is defined as a standalone facility, which is separate entrances, um, separate HVAC, things of that nature.
Did you wish to add anything?
Yeah, I was just wondering if, uh, if he gets the, the, uh, if he adjusted his letter in any way that wouldn't appease anybody in the audience here, uh, if he were to take out possible consumption? Because the law is, if we grant him the conditional use for cannabis, then, uh, he would be able to, uh, use this. Or is there something that he could adjust his application to appease some of the people here?
So the applicant may withdraw, um, some of the uses that he has proposed, if that is something that he chooses to do.
Mr. Applicant, uh, could you come to the podium or slow so a little bit?
It would be in regard to what is being voted on tonight. So if he wishes to remove any use, then the uses that are remaining would be voted on this evening. So if he chooses to remove any use, then that use would not be voted on this evening. So if he chose to remove any use, cannabis manufacturer one, or two, or three, or production, or retail, if he chooses to remove any one of those uses, then we would only be voting on the uses that he would choose to keep.
So what, uh, you...
That's just important information.
I mean, I'm willing to, to, to me, in the middle with anything when it comes to this, if it's going to make people feel more satisfied is, is the fact of not having retail or consumption on that property, to be honest with you, like I said, it wasn't in the initial proposal. It was really just the manufacturing and the, and the production, the production and the grow. Again, it's just because of the space. So if that's what it is, and I, I mean, if that's going to get us granted permission and make everybody else feel comfortable, then I'd feel fine doing that. And again, we have to go and still, like, this is one step. We still have to go and meet building codes and all that other stuff in order to do this. But without this initial step, then that just doesn't happen at all, none of it. And, and for me, it, I could see if it was something that I barely thought of October 24th or the week before. This has been an initial plan of ours. And before any of this, there was no pushback, zero. And even, of, of what we have going there, and not partly because obviously not everybody knew, but it, it was, it's not a secret. If you were in my circle, you would know. But a lot of individuals here aren't in my circle. You guys, like, I don't know your guys' personal business or business endeavors and all that stuff. You guys don't know mine. It's not, I don't need to share all that all the time. But if it comes to where it's in harmony and that's something that you, especially as a neighbor, right? You're right next door to us. We've talked about having bridges connecting the hotels and all that stuff. If that's what, it goes in harmony with the community and makes everybody feel better, then absolutely, I couldn't care less whether there's a retail or a, a consumption lounge there. My, my, my goal isn't to have a, to move our current retail or our consumption. That's not in my foreseeable future. We have enough irons in the fire to be doing any of that. So with that being said, you know, if it, if that's what it comes down to, then yes, I would. Wouldn't mind taking that off of the application.
Director, could I ask you to articulate what the change would be based on that?
So that would be at the applicant's discretion? So, um...
Is there any way that we, like, if we were to have this conversation after it's all said and done, you guys have to have that answer before we adjourn this hearing? Or is it something that, I mean, because there's still 15 days that people could go and they could appeal and they could go and say all that stuff, that I could go and, and sit down? I wouldn't even mind having conversations, like, you guys know where my place of business is. Come and talk to me anytime, anytime. Like, I'm there. I'm either in a maroon little car or 2003 Dodge Dually. So anytime that I'm there, ask for me. And if I'm not busy, I'd love to have a conversation with anybody, but I, I don't know what the correct answer to say right now to that, because I could say, "Yes, I'll take that off", and then it still gets denied, you know what I mean? So for me, I just, it's hard, it's, it's a, it's a toss-up. And I guess that's the chance too, right? I could be saying all these things and you guys think that I'm not going to follow through with it, but I have to, like, I don't care what other businesses do. Like, I just know what we do, and I know what we have to do. So I, I would be willing to do that if it would get the approval of not just the council, but the, the community. Because honestly, that's, we're just trying to do a, a service to, I understand that there was a big group here earlier, but for all the other people that enjoy what we do. So, and, and I'm not even, I can't even, to be honest with you, I need to ask my mom. Um, I can't speak on that, she's the owner of the business. I just talk because I, that's what I do.
Mr. Chairman, uh, one thing that our friends, the lawyers, have taught us is that what's written in black and white, and it says here, "And future retail". Now, we keep bouncing this back and forth. Does retail, and this is something that was a concern to a lot of the folks, does retail mean onsite consumption of cannabis products? And if it does, why does it say retail? Why doesn't it say cons- of consumption on premises allowed? Is that something that's devised by the state control officers? And that by retail, they mean consumption? I'm just asking.
Yeah, I can answer that. So every consumption lounge has a retail license with it. Every retail license does not have a consumption lounge tied to it. So there's two separate licenses. So technically, at our current location, we have four licenses with cannabis. One for manufacturing, a consumption lounge license, a retail license, and a production license. So that's where we... I just don't plan on moving operations down there other than the production. And we're actually don't, I don't have a necessarily, uh, an absolute timeframe, other than I know that after, when the summer and the bar gets up and going, we're going to start working on the bigger side and start doing more with that. That's all I could say. And again, even with that project with the bar, that's, that's separate people that aren't even involved in the cannabis part, aspect of the business. So there's, there's a lot of factions of what's going on within that property. But I know that one thing we will do is we go and we do everything to building code, appli- uh, ordinances with, and, and codes with this construction industries and all that stuff. We just do the best that we possibly can.
Seems, well, as I, we are, is, um, we're talking about simplifying the application, basically, by possibly eliminating something. And without thinking ahead too far, in our deliberations, we sometimes apply conditions. And perhaps that if we could articulate something that could go into a condition, then it wouldn't create the problem that he foresees of something backpedaling afterwards, because it would be a condition. Is that a possibility? And if so, what would we articulate?
That would depend on what the council decides. I mean, I can, I don't want to speculate, but the council will put their conditions on it, and then we go from there. I mean, obviously, I'll give it a legal review and say, "Okay, that one's okay, that one might have problems with."
Okay. And that would solve your particular issue there.
I'm sorry, I wasn't even paying attention because I was talking to my mom.
I'm suggesting that it's possible in our deliberations that we might add conditions. And it might be in the condition that something might be removed. There has to be a meeting of the minds between the applicant and community development on what went into that condition. Would that work for you, Director?
I'm sorry, Chairman, may I receive that?
Yeah, the, the sticking point that we're at right now is how does one remove something from this application? And the applicant is concerned that if he agreed to that and then, uh, the condition, either way, the whole thing gets denied, what has he placed himself in a difficult situation in the future? Whereas if we added a condition of the conditional use permit, that you will resolve those issues. We need to know roughly what they are and what would be removed. Then you wouldn't get into the situation of, the situation being denied.
I would, I would... I would say that it would be up to the discretion of the applicant whether he chooses to remove a use. Because based on the regulations that are in place when he submitted the application, he has the right to request the use. And so it would be his prerogative to remove it. That's my best understanding of kind of this unique situation.
And could the applicant articulate that in the form of a condition, perhaps?
I think we should take a brief recess. If you want me to give you legal advice, that's generally attorney-client privilege, I can do that.
Um, might I suggest that we actually, uh, go into an executive session for a minute?
What about the public hearing here in the middle?
I'm sorry?
The public hearing here in the middle?
Yes.
There are still people that want to talk?
We're trying to get a legal opinion. And if we don't, then I think we're going to go around in circles.
Why don't you extend the meeting? Because it's been over five hours, and it's not a test of endurance for us to be able to speak. I mean, we owe it to our applicant and to all of the people that want to speak to extend this. I mean, this has been going on for five hours, and, and Anthony certainly deserves a fair hearing, the other applicants do, and we all deserve to be able to speak. And it's getting to the point where I need to, like, take my mother home, and my child is in bed asleep, and I can't get my husband to come get her. So could you please consider that?
Okay, uh, Director, what are your thoughts on continuing?
I would, I would agree, maybe postpone to a, a scheduled date and time. I think there's provisions within Robert's Rules of Order to do it within 48 hours of the hearing.
We can do that if we could identify, if I remember correctly, the place and time where we could re-meet.
So without the availability of seeing if this room is an option at this time, um, we, we could potentially do it at the City Hall Annex and see if there's availability for the conference room? Because I just don't know the schedule for this, this room.
The, the process in the Open Meetings Act is if it, one can, uh, can postpone for up to a couple of days, provided we put notices on the entrances to this room and comply with a couple of other things, then it doesn't need additional noticing, if I recall correctly, and that's consistent with Robert's Rules.
I would just have to look into the availability of the space that could be sufficient for everyone who is in attendance and who was in attendance also.
And let everybody sign up so that if everybody that's in the room continues the meeting.
Even that, or if we go beyond that, then it would come under another noticing period of 15 days in the ordinance. Would that be better?
Whichever you prefer, Chairman.
So 15 days from now?
We might have a quorum problem on Thursday pertaining myself.
Yeah.
I would have to immediately written, post it on the tour.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, yeah. Well, 15 days, that's, uh, 14, 15. That would put it after the 17th of December.
May I ask a question? Would only people be able to speak that were sworn in today? Or could new members of the community be a part of that?
No, the, the thing continues right after where we stop here.
So I'll be at the podium when we start again.
I also have a question.
The next candidate.
Anything, and the, we continue in that meeting exactly where we left off. Uh, you don't have to worry about standing at the podium necessarily, but you might want to be present, obviously. And I agree with you that I think people are getting a bit tired. So if we look at the calendar, seven days is the ninth, 14 is the 16th. So we're looking at the 17th or the 18th of December.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm kind of waiting. People from the audience seem to be able to comment at this point, so I'm going to, even though I know it's not normally allowed. I would really ask that this body and staff look at my issue of appropriate public notice, given the addresses that are included in this project at this time. I would be sure that what's on there, so we can arrange it.
Thank you, I'm sure we will. I've already asked our attorney to review that, however. Thank you. Yeah, anyone who wishes to speak does need to come to the podium one at a time. But at this point, we're currently discussing a date that we can delay these things to.
So my question, is there a sooner date that we can postpone this? Because I am also the other applicant, but... But I was hoping to be here today because we would really like to, you know, kinda get a shot in the road.
Well, I'm current, I'm trying to settle on the date. And I've suggested the 17th or the 18th look like the earliest we could do it with a 15-day notice requirement. Not that I'm very good at calculating 15 days. And then we need to see if the commissioners are available, so...
Okay.
Chair?
If I may?
Yes.
So, under the Open Meetings Act, you can recess to a later date. You don't have to give the 15-day notice if you post it. You were correct on that. Uh, but you have to give the date, time, and place. Since we don't know the availability of this room, my suggestion would be to name a date, time, and place tomorrow at 1:00. To set the date when it's first available, so the first available date. So then tomorrow, you would reconvene just to set the date for, to, to recess and give a date firm so that everyone knows when that date is. Because you need, you need to know whether this room's available.
Yes.
Put it on the website.
Uh, I think that, Director, any comments?
I agree with, um, Mr. Critic that if we can utilize this space in a more expedited fashion rather than requiring the additional 15 days and also utilizing what is available in the Open Meetings Act, um, I think that would be the best for the applicants as well as for the community members that are here since the testimony that has been given would be fresh in their mind rather than waiting 15 days. And that would also be very close to the holiday season.
Okay.
I have availability tomorrow at 11:00 a.m.
11:00? And would that be in the here or the second floor annex?
It would be here. I would just, so...
I'm trying to understand. So you're meeting tomorrow to set up the next available time to resume the course? Okay, just for sure.
Do we know if this room will be available at 11:00 tomorrow?
So we can do it in the hall as long as there's a quorum of the commission.
Okay.
You know, there's a roll call made, we have a quorum. The motion can be made to postpone to a time that, at that point, we would be able to consult with the county to be able to ensure that this room would be available. So we'll be speaking the time and place, which is tomorrow at 11:00 a.m. in this building, to reconvene. And then we will postpone to a date and time based on the availability of this room, which will be set at that meeting.
So tomorrow's proposed meeting is not an executive session? It is a meeting that the public is invited to? It's a continuation?
It's a continuation. It's a continuation of the current meeting to be able to schedule this room because I don't have availability to see...
And then, and then people are wondering, how will the public know when the new meeting is set?
So it's based on the individuals who are in this room that have signed up for testimony, so...
You'll use this list to contact us and let us know?
So the, the time and place has been called right now and as, and publicly noticed to the individuals in this room, right now. And also the public that is watching on the internet.
Yeah.
And, um, I would have to also reach out to the ones on the witness sheet for the hearing since they were signed in to testify.
Right.
So it, it's not a call to additional individuals for revamping, we are continuing this hearing tomorrow.
When I'm, and I know we're all tired, so I'm sorry. Tomorrow, you'll meet at 11:00 a.m. here to decide the next available time this room is available. How will we know what that decision is? How will that information be? We're not gonna be at the meeting tomorrow at 11:00 a.m., necessarily.
It's gonna be a five-minute meeting, but the statute requires it to be posted on the door of this building and one other public place. That's what's required. I'm suggesting too that it be placed on the website.
Okay.
So the notice, like a normal notice on our, the town website says, okay, this meeting was reconvened and we'll reconvene at this date.
Yes.
And then you can always call. I mean, the, the idea is to get everyone back so they can finish it.
So tomorrow at 11:00 a.m., you are all meeting to decide when we will reconvene this meeting. It will be posted here on the door and one other public place. We can also call to find out when you decide. Thank you.
Excuse me, can I speak over? So I am also part of the second applicant. Excuse me. Um, I'm also part of the second applicant, uh, for the other conditional use permit. I don't know if we're gonna be available to attend a future meeting. So how is that fair to us? I know that this, uh, other one took five hours up of everybody's time. But, you know, we also have other things that we have to address. We have other businesses in Las Cruces that we have to attend. Uh, how is that fair to us? Um, that you guys decide a date and then we're not available?
Well, that could be a, that could get you back into the 15-day noticing requirement.
But the holidays are also coming up, so a lot of us have vacations planned.
Yeah. So...
Um, might I suggest that we give these availability or unavailable so that when they're considering the next meeting, they can, they'll know when you're available or not. Because definitely don't want it to fall to you or set a meeting when you can't appear.
Right, and it's December, you know, the holidays are coming. People are getting ready to travel out of town. Like, how is it fair for us to get ours postponed uh, when we were told that we were gonna be here today?
Well, sometimes meetings go longer than we anticipate. And it could be postponed, for example, to January. Okay, with that, um, we've fixed a time and place to meet at 11:00 tomorrow. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn to an adjourned meeting.
I move that we adjourn to an adjourned meeting.
I second it.
Oh, yeah?
You're, you're moving to recess.
Moving to...
I was suggesting as an adjourned meeting, as a continuation.
Your, the motion is to recess until... Tomorrow at 11:00 a.m. here.
Okay, right. I, I move that we...
Recess.
Recess until 11:00 a.m. at this location, uh, till 11:00, till 11:00 a.m. tomorrow.
Okay, oh, I second.
We have a motion and a second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing now, we are recessed until 11:00 a.m. tomorrow at this building.